I have seen more as well.
All right. All right. Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff Kloska, Director of the Colorado Air and Space Board. I'm happy here to present our P3 partners, Altitude X. And I won't introduce now all of their make their own introductions and get into their presentation on how things are going with the P3 and the items that we spoke about in the executive session that they're going to come up to. So with that, I'll sort of you down.
Yeah, quick introduction. Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, good to see you. Thank you. Also, thank you for the million dollar view that we get looking hours. It's beautiful out there. Yeah, thank you. Just to you, you and that. Yeah, it's actually two million, million. Thank you. Thank you. Quick introductions again. John Reitman, we've of course met before. You've met our team before. This is Charles Duncan. This is Garrett Clemens, Rob Reeves, who's our infrastructure guy, and Chris Newman on the end down here. Chris doesn't have a speaking part, so she's hanging out on the sidelines. Yeah. Listen, appreciate the time here today. We're hopeful to have more of these touch points. You know, truthfully, we've been in the pre-development window, as you know, for a number of months now and are having a really good experience with your team, by the way, very productive engagement. And as we engage the, you know, the local community, the aviation community, the aerospace community, truthfully, this opportunity is becoming more and more compelling each day. There's something unique here. There's no doubt about that. We're convinced of that. So what I'm, what we intend to do here today, we sent you a pre-read. Whether or not you had a chance to get through it in detail, it doesn't really matter. What we're hopeful is today is to tell you the story arc using the slides that you received. However, there are a couple places that we hope to do a bit of a deep dive and spend the majority of our time. And those places are power, water, and what's known as EB5 that you may have heard of from your team that we've been working on. We'd really like to spend the majority of time on that, even though we'll tell the story arc. And then we're hopeful we'll come back and other deep dive topics that you might be interested in other than those three I just mentioned that will come back and, and take you through those with more depth. Okay? Hopefully that makes sense. You know, to start out with, I'm controlling the slides here, so hopefully that goes okay. I may need help advancing them because they're not advancing. Where's the, the technical expert? I didn't have to wave a white flag. You're right there. So it wasn't just me. It could have easily been me, by the way, but it wasn't. Are we gonna?
That is gonna be.
Is that gonna be a trick?
Shooter is quick to the port.
There you go. Look at that. Okay, okay. Just to, you know, this just shows some of the topics in the story arc here. We don't need to linger on that. Again, I'm going to work through the story arc pretty quickly so we can spend time on the topics that we'd love to linger on, if you will. But feel free, of course, to interrupt me and if you need some insights. But, you know, I just want to remark, you could see the history here. Some of you may be super, most of you probably are very familiar with the history. You know, as, as I mentioned, you know, we're convinced that this is a really unique opportunity. You just don't find a property like this in a major metropolitan market that has the aeronautical ingredients in place and the upside of development opportunities. You just don't find that, especially in a, you know, a state like Colorado that's really rich in airspace presence, if you will. So there's a lot of really, really good ingredients here. And, you know, what I would say is we're, we're, you know, from the history here and the way that the county leadership over the years has created a pathway to include aeronautical ingredients that are, that are pretty good, two 8,000 foot runways, you know, a pretty new FAA tower. That's a really, a really large FAA tower, by the way. You know, but, you know, so, so the point is the history has led up to a point where there's a true, true unique opportunity ahead of us, as I've mentioned earlier. You know, the team, we've have briefed this before, Altitude X is larger than just this team. We do other things as well. We happen to own a, one of the larger flight academies in the nation that only specifically trains commercial airline pilots. We own a aircraft mechanic school, if you're not familiar, or if you probably are not familiar, that there's an absolute crisis in the pipeline of qualified certified aviation aircraft mechanics. So we own a school in that space. We're deep into the training space. And we have other, other endeavors other than CAS, but it all, you know, there's, there's a good point of synergy and overlap as well. But you could see our core team on the left side, and then we have some, some direct boots on the ground here. Garrett and Rob are good examples. We do have an open position right now that we're filling, by the way, which is another leader with boots on the ground. Okay. And you could also see some of the partners to include Greenberg, that's Chris's part of Greenberg and is in the room today. I don't need to go deeply into this again. You guys are very familiar with the demographics. And matter of fact, you have deeper insights around the demographics in the region for sure. But, you know, these sorts of considerations around, you know, the population growth and all the, all the different really interesting dynamics in the metro area, to include Adams County, of course, and the considerations around aerospace and the positioning of this particular property, really in like a really good region as it relates to aerospace, you know, again, help position this as a really unique opportunity. I'm going to stop here just for a little bit. Again, don't want to linger too much on this because we have other, other topics. But we'll take a minute and just talk about the vision again, as you know, sort of this property certified for horizontal spacecraft, essentially. You know, the, the prospects of that happening in the, you know, in the near term aren't so great, right? You know, we know a lot of the developers of horizontal spacecraft, we've talked to them and, you know, it's very likely that for years, maybe decades, that's going to be on the coasts, not in the middle of the country for safety considerations and other considerations. However, I will tell you that there are some really interesting concepts around using military aircraft, and these are big cargo, you know, aircraft like the C-17, which may not mean anything to you, but it means a lot to us. It's a really interesting airplane. But there's some concepts around horizontal launch, horizontal takeoff and landing using military aircraft. That could be a closer in prospect for the Colorado Air and Space Port. There's things we need to do with the runways, extending the runways and taxiways and so on. But that prospect could be something interesting more nearer term than the innovation that's happening to create these sorts of spacecraft. So launch might happen here. We're not saying it's not going to happen here. We're sort of compartmentalizing it and building a, you know, a, a foundation that allows for launch, but is it creates a real commercial, you know, economic engine here as it relates to aerospace and aviation. So the way we're thinking about the space side of things, aside from what I mentioned about launch is look, Colorado's, you know, depending on how you measure it, they're, you know, let's say they're number two in aerospace in the country. The companies that support the space sector in general are plentiful in Colorado. They just happen to be spread out all over the place and they're typically not on an airfield. So we think there's a prime opportunity. We've tested this in the space community that validates this to create a bit of a space center of excellence with, where with a common purpose, we bring a number of these entities together. we bring a number of these entities together on, on, on CASP, on the property. And we're getting a really good reaction from the space community around that. We do need to create the common purpose around that. And there's some, some hints that we're getting from the space community around that. Like, for instance, the presence of higher education on the property, you know, was really important to the space community, by the way. And, and things like, things that relate, that support the space industry where there's major capacity constraints around the United States, like wind tunnels. You know, the wind tunnels that exist today, there's, you know, there's a long queue to get access into these wind tunnels. These are, you know, testing opportunities or needs, I should say, for the space industry. Not only is there an enormous capacity constraint, but these wind tunnels that exist, 80% of them were created in the 60s and they're just not modern. So that these really innovative companies send their whiz bang engineers out there for testing in, in, and they can't plug in their laptops and get immediate sharing of data and information, that sort of thing. So, so a modern wind tunnel could be really interesting. But the bottom line is creating a, you know, a space center of excellence that's focused on, you know, testing and R and D manufacturing, that sort of thing, we believe is a really good prospect. Now, we think it's also important to diversify and, you know, this isn't an extreme diversification, but diversify from space and consider aviation uses on the airfield. And they need to be aviation uses that fit into the airspace neatly, let's say, because of the fact we're so close to Denver International Airport. We know a lot about Denver International Airport, all the operational considerations. I mean, you know, as you know, most of us are United Airlines, you know, executive level, United Airlines graduates, if you will, and, and with United's presence at Denver International Airport, of course, we know all the dynamics operationally. And, and we also know that if we start interfering too much with the airspace, it's going to be a problem. You know, for, for the region, it's going to be a problem. So we're, and there are smart way, there are smart, I don't want to say solutions, but there are tenants that, that we have in mind that could, that we think could fit neatly into the airspace without creating congestion and problems for the region. Okay. Things like MROs, that stands for maintenance, repair and overhaul. So these are big maintenance facilities that do real heavy type maintenance on, on airplanes. And the reason that it's could be a good candidate, by the way, is because it's low frequency flying. So, you know, it could be three to five trips a day or flights a day. And it's what we refer to as unscheduled service. So you could fly anytime. You fly at two in the morning when the airspace is more appropriate to fly those sorts of things. And we have other ideas other than MROs. But, but the, the theme of aviation uses that fit neatly or that are respectful of the airspace, airspace, if you will, is, is it, we're convinced it's a very good theme. And again, the aviation community, we've tested that and we're getting a really good reaction. Just one little twist there, not twist, but consideration, you know, is we need to be able to demonstrate, you know, that there's a pipeline of labor to attract those sorts of tenants. Workforce development is incredibly important. We met with your team multiple times, but yes, just yesterday we had a meeting. We think we have some momentum relative to workforce development. And I think that's a topic for another day. There's a slide in here where we could probably spend a good amount of time explaining our vision around that and how we activate that. Last but not least on this slide, we're going to talk about a couple of infrastructure considerations today, power and water. But there are other infrastructure considerations. So we're, we're hard at work relative to those sorts of solutions. Real quick on this slide, I, you know, I already mentioned some of this, right? So we have focus on, you know, you could, you could read the types of the themes of the types of tenants that could be appropriate for CASP. I would draw your attention to the potential anchor tenants, MRO. I mentioned that, maintenance, repair and overhaul. Wind tunnels I mentioned, but I didn't mention this data center. You'll, you'll see when we talk about power and water, how if you're, you might be familiar that there is acreage within the 3,400 acres of CASP that is considered off airport property, right? There's 400 acres. We think that could be really relevant for data center. If we can solve for the power and water considerations around that, which we think we have a good, good line of sight and good momentum, actually, on solving for that. So a data center could be appropriate on that 400 acres. On this slide, again, trying to be brief, I'm not doing such a good job of doing that, but I'm gonna try to be more brief. Early tenants, listen, congratulations. I would stand up and clap for your team, honestly, regarding attracting Boom Super Sonic. You may not know a lot about them, you know, but we do. And I could tell you in the aviation community, that is a global brand that's doing some incredible things. Now, they may not ever get to the finish line, by the way, but right now they're getting attention for doing, really for, you know, doing some incredible innovative things and they're getting attention around the world. It's a global brand. They've raised multi billions of dollars, by the way. And, you know, attracting them into their, the, you know, they have to develop their engine and they have to, they're doing that themselves, by the way. They need a place to, to test and, and doing that on CASP is just brilliant. And, and it's, we've gotten, you know, we, we operate in the aviation airspace circles. And when that was announced publicly through the media release, we got a lot of incoming attention around that. So congratulations for attracting them. I mentioned higher education. We already secured University of Denver. I think you're aware of that. Within a week, they're going to be operational. Their, their intent is to go to their endowment, raise funds and actually build a standalone brick and mortar facility here at CASP. That's our intent. Hopefully they get their aviation training. There's a couple of companies to include ours, which is Thrust Flight. Spartan's already negotiating, hasn't negotiated at least. I think you might be aware of that. I won't drain the rest of the slide, but the point is there's early momentum here. These aren't all enormous companies or enormous endeavors, but the early momentum is super helpful for sure. And it's an indicator, in my opinion, it's a leading indicator of further evolution here. You know, we, we believe, yeah, as you might know, I'm sure you know, Rocky Mountain Industrials has developed a rail park adjacent to property. We share a fence. There's like a really, really interesting potential intermodal concept here. And we've talked to them directly about this a few times, that we want to tease out what that could mean. And it could be things like cold storage. It could be freight and cargo opportunities, you know, and, and not just with the adjacent rail park, but the highway system that's close by, obviously there's some roadway improvements, interchange improvements that are needed, and the fact that there's international lift at a Denver International Airport. You put all that together and there really could be something really interesting here. How we're working to understand that is now that University of Denver is a tenant at CASP, they've agreed to do some free projects for this. So this is a practice that Charles and I specifically have used at United Airlines for years with higher education. But, you know, so we have PhD level professors and students studying intermodal potential at CASP. And that project is, is just kicking off. Okay. Yeah, I'll make a, a mention here. You see that the yellow areas here are the modules, the identified modules of developable acreage. One interesting insight is we went through the work with your team to really understand what's developable. We found out that there's more developable than we realized. So we originally started with about, as you know, maybe 3,400 acres, of which 960 were initially deemed to be developable. Just through our, our research with your team, we have figured out there's really about 1,300 acres that's developable. And that's a really good development, a very good, that's a lot of, there's a big difference there, right? So what we've have started to do now is to identify the types of uses specific to the different developable modules on the airfield. And you could study this. It's in your pack that we sent you. And again, this probably deserves a, a deep dive discussion. So you could really hear how we're thinking about things. I'll take a second. Is there any questions? Because we're going to go into power, water and EB5. Yeah. And we have some times. I think I did that pretty efficiently.
Um, so I don't, you don't need to go back, but you were listing potential uses for some of these spaces. One of the things that I've heard from midsize, and I do mean like midsize slash smaller aerospace firms in the Adams County area is the need to have a skiff that's unconnected to one of the bigs. And I didn't actually see that listed out as potential amenities slash.
Yeah, so it is absolutely something on our radar. And actually, if you look at what my vision, yeah, module nine there on the top, the, the DOD and classified module is, is actually intended to have a skiff in it. So, so we, and it has definitely come up in a lot of our conversations that, that there, there aren't enough skiffs in the country and the state and the ones that are here are dilapidated and hard to gain access to. So.
There's, there's some opportunities to look at modulars. Sorry, there's opportunities to explore modular skiffs and things that are certified. There's actually builders here in Denver that build modular skiffs. So we've kind of looked at how that fits into the plan where the DOD module nine would look and be in it. It would be speed to market as well.
Great. Thank you. That's my question.
Any other questions before we get into the meat? Okay. All right. I'm going to introduce this just quickly, if you will, you know, as you know, and this isn't just specific to Colorado, it's specific to all geography, especially in the United States. From a, you know, from development perspective, there are enormous considerations around power capacity, how you get power. In Colorado, there are also enormous considerations around water. We knew this early on and very early on. You, you may remember, maybe you don't, but within our, within the Altitude X investor group that supports our holdco, we have energy guys. And these are world-class energy guys, you know, one of the founders of Tall Grass Energy, by the way, is in our investor group. So we really went, we went to our energy guys, the experts and a long time, while ago, and made the point that if we can figure out speed to power, speed to water, that would be self-sustaining to CASP, but also benefit in some sense out Adams County more broadly, which you'll hear about in a minute, that that could be really creating edge. You know, we know parcels of land, you may be aware of this, given your roles, but we know parcels of land where data centers, for instance, were super interested in the geography, only to figure out that they can't get power for seven years or five years, whatever it is. And there's also water limitations and data centers consume a lot of water. So they abandon those, you know, those pursuits, right? So we believe that speed, if we can get, if we can accomplish speed to power and water and accomplish it the right way, that it could be a real, real edge for this acreage. And we've been working very hard at that and have really good momentum. I don't want to be excited about it because I, I like to be measured until things are activated, if you will. But so that's what we want to talk to you about. We want to talk to you about our vision around power and where we are, because it's more than a vision. We're putting a vision in place and also the same around water. And then we want to talk to you about EB5, which may be a foreign term, we'll define it and explain why we think it's important to this project. And we're going to need your support as well. And we'll, we'll mention where we need support. Okay. So Rob will give you the mic. Oh, do you want me to?
We don't have a lot of slides actually on this, so.
Yeah.
To get a more description from Rob.
Okay, so as John had said, and he's kind of walked through all of the different clients and all of the different industries that we're looking to bring into the development to, you know, support job growth, to get the workforce development going. So we can really create that center of excellence around aerospace and aeronautical uses. So our first thing is, is these are large power users. They're not data center power users, but we factored in the data centers because we felt like you're not going to get a good balance of use of your property if you don't, you know, look at each of the debt, the developments and basically kind of balance that out. So we spent time in many phone calls with Excel Energy, working our way through the system, getting to people to understand what, you know, what's, what's available there. And it's very small. It's two megawatts for the entire area. That doesn't power our first development if we wanted to go do the paint booth. So we figured out very quickly that we need to develop a behind the meter microgrid to self-support the development while Excel Energy catches up. So basically what we did is we looked at, okay, so how are we going to do this? You're not just going to hit go and build 100 megawatt microgrid, you know, in a year and a half. So we looked at a phased approach. We looked at who are strategic partners that we have. And we've signed a very meaningful LOI with a super major oil company for the natural gas supply. Now that will supply natural gas for the natural gas generators as well as the fuel cell technology that we're bringing into the microgrid. And basically the fuel cell technology adds a very sustainable, good balanced load. And it is a green and sustainable power generation source with very limited air quality impacts. So we're kind of blending both. And then we moved into, okay, so now we've secured gas supply. We need to secure the equipment and we signed a meaningful LOI with Liberty Power Innovations. And basically we've developed a concept where we're going to come in and build. I know you were briefed earlier on a confidential slide. We indicated initially it would be 40 with our fuel cell technology. And as we're paying the environmental consultants and doing the research on the air quality, making sure we're being good stewards to the environment, we figured out that we've got a balance that we can get up to 100 megawatts. 100 megawatts of power really changes, is a game changer for the property of Colorado Air and Space. So that's basically where we've headed. The thing that we like about this and what we're doing is this really is a job creating entity, this microgrid, because we're going to get, first of all, we're going to have a lot of construction jobs to get this built. So then you're going to help, you can get your workforce development engaged in that. Then you're going to step in when we prove out, and we'll get to water in a minute, when we prove out the power, then we start bringing in the larger, you know, employers, because we can supply the power that they need to build the facilities that are going to, you know, need people to come work in their facilities. So that is kind of the, the network around it. We spent a lot of time and energy, no pun intended, to kind of build this team. And then just as one further note, as our, we developed this process with our super major oil company, there's, you know, everybody's saying, oh, well, solar's dead. Well, solar's not dead. I think there's a good opportunity for solar. Yes, there's been some things happen in the environment around it. But we have a solar developer that has already, you know, few years back, tied up land in and around Colorado or in space to bring another 200 megawatts of solar that we can bring into the microgrid. So we're really bringing a three-pronged attack to the power generation while we're waiting for Excel. And that's advantageous when you're talking to, you know, large data center provider or you're talking to somebody that depends on power, you know, you don't want a power outage when you're painting an airplane, right? So, so basically that gives us some good consistency of power.
Rob, let me, that's one point for him. My.
Thanks for that, Rob. You could see that this is going to be a phased approach over many years, by the way. We're looking at this as 10 plus years. What Rob referred to and, you know, I'd say 90% of what he referred to is our phase one, which is, you know, called two to three years. We could be active with that level of power, line of sight to 500 megawatts, which is huge, by the way. This phased approach beyond the 500, you know, we have a, you know, an intent to create a pathway to green energy, you know, it starts with natural gas. You know, Rob alluded to the fuel cell technology, which is green energy and solar. But we have some ideas longer term as well, so that there's a clear pathway to green energy. And at another time, we could talk about that longer term view, once we build that out a bit further. Okay.
I'll add one thing to that, too. We've gotten a lot of great momentum with this project. Today we kicked off permitting. So that's a big step for us to start the air permitting process with CPH. We expect that to go fairly smoothly. But yeah, great momentum, getting that piece of it kicked off.
So on power, we'll pause, take any questions and then maybe we'll shift to what? Yes, sir.
Yeah. I, I, I would, so there's a lot of need over in that general area. And what I would like to see as a, because while your focus and the focus of today's discussion is, is really on Colorado Air and Space Port, I have to look broader and, and I think it'd be who's us look broader and say, where else? And how else are other people in that general area getting power? First and foremost, I would ask that we explore conversations with Denver International Airport, we, with you, but not you alone. Have those conversations, find out how they're doing their studies and discussions and planning of feasibility on getting power to their property. The reason I say that is I don't, I hate for us all to be kind of doing our own little siloed efforts and then look back and say, wow, there might've been some economies of scale to look at a broader thing. Because we also, the five of us have to look regionally, including sub-regionally, like in the Otrupolis area, to make sure that we're making some good decisions that kind of benefit the whole area. So I know you, you might have a different timeline of need. I get that. What I don't want to do is, is forego the short-term, quick win for, you know, I would hate for you guys and all of us to step into something where we rush into a decision that prevents us from taking full advantage of potential economies of scale in a broader regional effort.
Yeah, totally get that and appreciate that. You know, we would welcome those discussions for sure. And I, I think it's a good insight. We, we originally, when we originally went down the pathway of power, we were thinking about off-taker from this property, which would be really economically instructive. Meaning creating power, relative of power plant on CASP that you could off-take off this property. But there's some real considerations there relative to encroaching on the utilities franchise. that we think that you can't do that. Now, water's different, we're gonna talk about water in a minute. So, there could be art of possibility beyond building the power plant on CAS, right? But, you know, so we'd love to explore further.
I think our staff can follow up with you on some specifics.
Yeah.
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 I guess then the other piece for power, I, there's a lot of property in the Arotropoulos area that is, that are, a lot of property owners that are chasing the data center wave. The difference for me is that being at Colorado Air and Spaceport is different than the rest of the land where other data centers can go. And what I would also hate for us to do is chew up some of our square footage acreage for data centers that could go elsewhere, when we may want to maximize and save that for space and aeronautics-specific opportunities.
Yes.
And data centers make me a little nervous in that area, when the whole place, you could put them three miles away, put them here, put them here, what I don't want us to do is be like, but you can't put spaceport, airport-type uses over there. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah, it does. Well.
Do you want to show the modules, we can.
Show what?
Just the modules, Atlanta, where we're thinking about it, so. Ultimately.
It's module six, which is the off-airport property, but I get your point, because even the off-airport property could be a useful aeronautical-related use for the on-airport.
The type of opportunity that doesn't exist anywhere except for along that fence. If there's stuff.
Yeah, no, I understand, I totally get that point, okay. Something for, certainly we'll consider that, Commissioner. And I, you know, I would agree with you that there's a data center wave, which we've explored and are trying to be very careful. The trick is, you know, most are having a very hard time specifically securing power and water, and that's where we think we can create an edge that we're already, that's already evolving. But I, I truthfully get your point about economies of scale, and if there's a different way to do it and get to the same place, it may take longer, but we ought to explore that for sure.
Workbench might be something, but when you, we look at the broader economic changes of the economic environment, I'm gonna just use, forgive me, marijuana as an example. There was a major green rush in Colorado when we were basically the monopoly on legalization. As things started getting bigger and the environment changed, you know, we're stuck with a bunch of empty places, and some, at some point, that energy may come at a less price for those others' competitors, and the edge that we have today may not be there.
Okay. Yeah. Noted. Uh, there was a question over here.
Yeah, I had a, I really appreciate Steve's questions, I generally agree with him. Something I don't know about the types of organizations that you were pursuing. I know in the financial sector, proximity to the data analytics and speed responsiveness is incredibly critical, but I'm not as sure about these uses if the proximity for data analytics, those seconds or fractions of seconds matter, and proximity would matter for some of the uses you're pursuing.
Yeah, and like, you know, the, the data center we're contemplating, first of all, there, there is a benefit relative to attracting innovation in general, I mean, a, a lot of the R and D and testing companies that we would be interested in attracting, you know, they're chock-full of engineers, aeronautical engineers, very sophisticated jobs where processing speed is really important. But the, the data center, you know, there's proximity elsewhere, meaning otherwise, other than just CAS, right? It's not for the benefit just to support CAS, it's probably the benefit to support, you know, even, even Denver, right, right here, right? And, and where there's density of workforce, workforce density. If that answers your question.
It does, okay, so you're saying it's a factor, but it's not necessarily like necessary in attracting other tenants to have the excess processing speed on site.
It's useful, very useful.
Yeah. And I think the bandwidth is, is the Colorado Air and Spaceport is surrounded by every major hyperscale bandwidth provider, and there's multiples of them, there's lots of puffs and huts all around. So, to get high-capacity data, multiple streams to CAS to any user is a fairly easy broadband construction project. So you're, it, it is absolutely surrounded, that's what makes this site so attractive on many levels, because of the power we can generate, because of the access to fiber, and then we'll move into the water here shortly. But basically, that data, being close to data center, to the fiber does help the latency, and it is a meaningful conversation when we're engaging space R and D companies that may want to have something here, they want to make sure they have bandwidth because they have facilities across the country, and they may be doing something here that they want to, or they're doing something on the coast that they want to monitor here. So we've kind of looked at that, and, and the site has the bandwidth, and it's an easy construction project to get it there.
Great, that's helpful.
Other questions on power? Okay, the, the observations or even concerns are noted for sure, we'll, we'll explore for sure. Okay, we're gonna shift to water, Rob's gonna do water.
Same sort of situation, creating an edge by having self-sustaining water to CAS, which actually in this instance, there is a there, there is the potential to provide water beyond CAS, a little bit different than power.
Yeah, so, so basically on our, our water solution for CAS, again, as we go back through and we start looking at the potential tenants and what it's gonna take, we looked at the water situation, we spoke with, you know, the staff, and, and basically currently CAS is, is, there's a well out there supporting that. It'll get short-term clients in, it's not the, it's not gonna solve for all the clients. So we, you know, as we've done with power, we dug in and said, okay, what's our solution, how are we gonna come in? We looked at punching a bunch of wells in the ground, yeah, that's, that's an option, not a great option. So as we spoke, we have investors that are heavy in the energy space and, and very well connected throughout the, you know, Colorado and the water market. And, and basically what we've done is we've partnered with a group that has, it's a three-phase project, phase one is already operational. Phase two would come online in about eighteen months to two years. And basically, that's eleven thousand acre-feet of water, which is a significant amount of water. There's existing infrastructure that can be used to convey the water to Adams County. We view this as, this is more of a CAS, because CAS needs water, but the amount of water that CAS needs is not significant enough to justify this kind of a development project, so we're kind of talked with the staff of, hey, what is your, what is Adams County water, you know, vision, what are you looking at five years, ten years down the road? And basically, we feel that this reservoir can solve that problem. And basically, one of the questions that was brought up is, hey, that's great, we need water sources, but we also need, you know, we're gonna need some treatment. So we've also looked into how we could do regional treatment facilities instead of packaged treatment facilities to get some economies of scale with, you know, your, you know, the cities in Adams County. So there's some, some opportunities for partnerships there to offset costs. And, and again, what this is doing, it's going to drive the development, which will drive the growth, obviously, and then that helps with the workforce. And, and basically, where, where it's really at is, is without the water, we're gonna be limited in our growth at what we can do at Colorado Air and Space, whether that's a data center, whether that's a large MRO paint booth, or, you know, any, any type of facility like that. So, this is a very key component into solving, so, so basically what we've identified here today is, we know there's bandwidth, easy to get, we know Excel's not gonna solve a problem for anything around the area for five to seven years, because we have other data on that. And then basically, you have to solve for water, and this is it, and the thing that, that really kind of brings it, and, and Charles will kind of speak to it, is there's a great opportunity to fund the water through the EV five, EV five program, because it is, Adams County is a party to, you know, the water as an off-taker and, and as a partner, so I think that's kind of the, the Cliff Notes on the water.
Yeah. Any questions on water, if I talk about EV five next? Yeah, yeah.
I have a question, so, with this water project, do we have an estimate of how much it would cost?
We're, we're working through that, and we're basically, we don't, we don't have a number that we can say exactly right now. There's a lot of variables, you know, obviously, this permit, it will have a permit to begin construction on the dam from the state, the fourth quarter of this year. So, once we have that, currently they're going through the validation of the O P P C, O P C C's opinion of probable costs. Then basically the contractors will engage, and they'll come up with the actual bids of what, what it really is going to look like, and then once the construction costs are finalized, then that will be put into the model to kind of answer how, how you're going to, you know, what, what the water price would look like.
I, I will say, our, we suspect that it will be less expensive than what's currently happening at CAS.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting. Okay, the reason why I ask is, right, when we start talking about funding, it's pulling together multiple funding sources that typically is needed for these projects. I'm just trying to figure out what kind of gap we're trying to fill. So as soon as you guys have those numbers, I think that that would be really helpful in our ability to try and make decisions on what we are willing to do to cover that gap. I agree with that, Steve?
On water, okay, so, again, I'm gonna ask the question, rather than us having a silo where we have our own little water solution, I understand you said we can also, once it comes in, share it back out, or however, it could be more broad and regional, I appreciate that. My question on the water piece, before we even get to the EV five, is what was the option or alternative with Aurora? Because it's my understanding, they were trying, they wanted, you know, eventually connect Colorado Air and Spaceport, and then the second one is, did you guys reach out? And how did it go with those guys from, like, Todd Creek, because I know they were trying to do stuff on the east side of DIA. You know. I, I have not had any discussions with Todd Creek. We were under the impression that the county wanted to derive their own water and step away from the city of Aurora, or Aurora Water. We can investigate that, we went down the path of solving to give you care, custody, and control of your own water source and supply, and how you manage that and not beholden to Aurora Water.
And I can fill that out a little bit better. I want to say that we are about a little over a year away from reconsideration, the Aurora Water agreement we're currently under, it's anticipated, given that this will take time to develop any of these solutions, that there is a solution for at least some renewal that occurs there with that. But not long-term, and their complete build-out that they've been discussing for sometimes, is for some time, is six to eight years out to get to remove from their current system of serving us as they are.
I'm confused by that answer, so like, my, my, like, we currently get our water from where?
They pipe in, and we are an out-of-area, basically, user. They want to become an in-area user by extending farther out, but that's a ways off, and it's on the top of my head, I'm forgetting the name of the development, but I can get that to you guys, it's been on the books for ages.
But, if I, here's why I'm asking.
Port, Port Colorado?
No, it's not that, it's Elder Creek or something like that, and we're quite aware of it, we've talked with Aurora Water on it, when they're actually gonna get more developed systems out that way, and nothing like will serve the entirety of the CAS development is on deck for at least sixteen years.
Number one is that, next year is when we're up for renewal. And the next thing you said is, six to eight years for them to build. That's the deep, to build out, to connect to us.
To build out and serve what we're looking to phase two in development.
My question was, that was what they told us, that was their company line at the beginning, that's their default. If they know that we're toying with going and saying, screw it, we're gonna do it on our own, we don't need you, would that generate a better deal and speed up, instead of waiting for a year? Could it possibly also generate and encourage them to do a better deal on accelerating their reach of their pipeline to us for the fallout, so we're not gonna wait six, eight years? I mean, there's a difference between taking the first answer versus leveraging some of the stuff that these guys were talking about to get some sort of better answer.
Right, well, that is true, but I think that the development that we're looking at with our partnership that we're developing here is more long-term for what we plan for CAS entirely. And we have talked at length with Aurora and the economic development groups there, so those conversations are ongoing at all times, it's not really a situation where you take the first answer. These have been ongoing discussions and will continue to be.
Yes, go ahead, and then.
Yeah, so just, I think the one thing that you, you're kind of looking down the barrel of, do you want to be in control of your water, does Adams County want to decide where you allocate and who, who, who you will serve and what developments you'll fund, or do you want to be beholden to Aurora and what they say they will give you in allocations? So, so I think it's kind of a, the county has to make a business decision on this issue.
Absolutely.
And when we began this discussion, that was part of, some of you will remember our strategic planning and master planning for this site was to become more and more autonomous at the site. So, that was what we put out for when we went out to our I and our C eventually. So that is what we're developing with them, we do understand that we have a short-term gap to work through.
So I'm gonna hop in here, and then I saw Kathy also had her hand raised. I absolutely agree with you. I am fine in the long-term, when I talk long-term, it's greater than ten years. And I think that's really the horizon as policymakers that we look at, is the ten to twenty, thirty-year outlook and vision of the county, and my concern with Aurora Water being the long-term provider out there, and I agree it has to be a business decision, is that then we are beholden to their politics in Aurora, and we're beholden that municipal partners, municipalities are not, thank goodness Denver Water is, but they are not very open to being a service provider, but you're not part of their jurisdiction of being in the city limits of Aurora, which that means that we would lose our investment in Colorado Air and Spaceport if Aurora down the line decided as a water provider, if we were to play out that scenario, and they were a long-term water provider, that they, we would have to incorporate the city limits, and we would potentially, that, that's my biggest concern. The other thing is, is that there's, in this five to six-year gap, I understand the, the speed of wanting to get this done is that being a first-time mover on this, and I don't know our role outside of the EV process, EV five process, our role is that other than through casual conversations on a trip, accelerate Colorado trip, when it was mentioned in conversation that Adams County wanted to control our water destiny at the Air and Spaceport, there were surrounding, unbeknownst to me, people I was talking to, as well as the county manager at the time, were the landowners out that are neighbors to CAS, and they were wanting to de-annex and come back to Adams County and not be part of the city of Aurora. So there is a great need, there, they, these are land investors for twenty years that have been out there, that it's now has come, what we thought was gonna be a quick, build DIA, and we're all gonna, you know, understand this economic boom has now taken twenty, thirty years to get to portions of Adams County, so at the time that conversation took place was just, just two years ago. We had talked about a special district being formed, I still want to hear the EV five and, and your pitch, but we historically, as a county, have not been a water provider and/or a treatment provider. So, I'm, I want to hear what you have to say about that, but also what does special district look like is something that I'd like to eventually look at as well. Kathy?
Yeah, no, I, I agree with what Lynn has said, I, yeah, I think it's best for us to have, be autonomous in our water, securing the water for CAS, it allows us to be as nimble as possible, as fast, as things can change and develop in this industry and as we go forward, and so, and for all the other reasons that you cited, Lynn, I think that we should be enjoying our water, that we should be securing that for ourselves and moving forward in that vein.
I, I certainly want to hear the pitch, and I think that obviously having our own autonomy would be helpful, but everything comes with a cost-benefit analysis.
Yeah, of course, yeah. And we think of cost-benefit, we don't have that prepared today, with, because we need to compare it to one, to our, we think it's been a whole day, like, for sure. Um, already, you're, it's our opinion. You guys would know better. You're paying a premium for water today. Already. And and by the way, it's a meaningful premium. Um, so if we're able to pursue this project like we're speaking about, if we're able to use EB five or something similar, right? To create cost effective approach. Um, I think the economics are gonna be super compelling and it's not limited to CAS. There's this, these are large reservoir projects that can be useful throughout.
The greater region, right?
Yeah. Right. Um.
And special districts.
Did you? Okay. So so before I turn it over to Charles for the EB five funding, um, you mentioned the special district where we've are exploring a special district. I just wanted to say that it's not mutually excuse the exclusive. You can do EB five because that gives you the time machine to get the funding to get your project built. And then you can flip that to a, you know, a special district. So it's not one or the other. They can be used together.
All right, Charles.
Pretty good to move to EB five?
Yeah.
Is it okay? All right.
Charles is gonna take the floor.
Yeah, and so John and I have been getting an education on this and over the last six months or so, um, maybe even a little bit longer. And and really, I mean, as as Rob had mentioned, I mean, EB five is 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 meant to be a funding source um, on on really advantageous terms that we think for CAS and Adams County and in our P three partnership, we can take advantage of. Um, so what is EB five? It's, you know, here on the slide somewhat defined. This is a longstanding federal program that has strong bipartisan support um, that has that has always been intended to drive economic development and US job growth, just sort of full stop and and, you know, in in the simplest form. Um, it has, um, you know, there've been dozens and dozens of projects across the country that have taken advantage of EB five funding. They typically are um, in in big, large urban areas. Think Hudson Yards in Manhattan, um, the Philadelphia Shipyard. Um, there've been other projects, Naval Yard, I'm sorry, but Naval Yard uh, um, in Philadelphia and and, you know, other big, large urban projects. And there are various classifications of EB five, um, one of which um, uh, ironically CAS does not qualify for a rural project because it's it's in the Denver MSA. But our CAS project and the water project as we're envisioning it, and we think the water project would be a fantastic entry point for EB five, um, does qualify as infrastructure. And so, you know, in in effect, again, federal program, um, strong bipartisan support on on both sides of the aisle in Washington for it. Um, it it's really meant to raise um, funds, capital from foreign investors who are um, then get an accelerated process for a green card for permanent residency and they, there's a uh, you know, a long list of countries, multiple countries around the world, they go and source these funds funds from. And, you know, really the advantage is that the cost of capital, in effect, the interest, the cost of this debt is very, very low. Um, these investors are not looking for a return. They're looking for a green card. And the program is vetted by CIS uh, under Homeland Security and the program, it needs to be um, through a government entity. We have to, you know, work as part of our P three Adams County and there has to be a job creation entity which this project would clearly serve and do. And the other interesting part of this, and this ties into the um, the district aspect that Rob was talking about. Um, it it can uh, create um, uh, you know, a renewal process where when the when the original investors are paid off, you can then go, um, you know, secure more funding for additional projects and add-ons. It can be almost like a revolving line of credit, if you like, or shift it over to a district or other form of, um, you know, of a financial uh, capital, you know, provision in that sense. So it's um, something, you know, we we're really attracted to it because um, uh, one, I mean, it's it's uh, well, it's a program we can tap into. Um, and when we've talked to the consultants about it, they're really excited because it fits the the um, the onus, the the, you know, um, the mindset of what the program is. It's a really good fit for the program. And uh, yeah, it's just much cheaper than going to a bank or other forms of, uh, you know, other lenders who would who would be, um, you know, happy to lend, but a much higher, you know, interest rate ultimately. So so that that's what EB five is. And as I said, uh, um, you know, we've been spending a lot of time getting smart and studying um, up on it. Um, we do have, um, you know, there, there's a time constraint here. Um, we need to get an application in um, in September if we're to meet the current fiscal year funding calendar, or we have to wait a whole year, you know, for the following September. And so, you know, really, um, you know, if if the board is comfortable with it and happy to, you know, do our best to answer any questions you have. Um, what we're hoping to do is is to um, come out today with a green light for the county to then um, kick off an RFP process. There are a number of EP five firms that provide these services and actually get, you know, um, get the investors um, in the different foreign countries, vet them and so on, and present the projects and it's competitive. The the investors actually will choose among different projects they want to invest in. Um, but we've been assured that this project would rise to the top of the list because it's infrastructure. Um, and uh, the job creation is certain and we have a very strong government entity, uh, you know, in Adams County partnering with us on it. And so it really kind of ticks all the boxes when we talk to, um, you know, the the providers of 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 EB five services. So maybe I'll I'll pause there. Now, there's a lot um, on the slide in terms of the process and the structure and so on, but hopefully at least it gives a high level of of what it is. And John and I had never really heard of it before until uh, we probably, you know, last fall or last summer, as we started digging into it. Um, we got more and more excited about this being a good potential fit, um, you know, certainly for the water project to start off with.
Julie? Okay, so you get two hundred million dollars max potentially from this project?
Potentially, yeah. Well, yes, that would be on an annual basis. So there, so yes, um, you know, in terms of the pool. Now, the the individual investors commissioner um, for this would invest eight hundred thousand and there's, there's actually a waiting list or allocations by type of project. And so there's two hundred million available, um, you know, for infrastructure projects or EB five for the upcoming September deadline.
And so we wouldn't get the two hundred million, we would get a a smaller portion.
Probably it's gonna be fifty or sixty percent of your project cost.
Fifty to sixty percent of your project cost. Okay.
And then as Charles looked to that gets re, you know, there's, it gets refunded, if you will, each year. And once you're in the program, you know, you'll have somewhat have access to ongoing funding capability right through the program. Which could be allocated, you know, we're thinking you start with water, but then once the water projects has evolved, we'll like, hopefully, likely have another infrastructure project could be on CAS on the property that then therefore the program could be allocated to that that project.
Okay, and we don't get to choose the investors. Is that correct?
No, no.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that, so then would we know who the investors are?
Sure, yes. Now, they they are vetted individually by CIS, the Customs and, you know, Immigration Service. So they're federally vetted, each of those individual investors. It it, you know, it's a federal program with heavy, strong oversight from Homeland Security. Um, you know, completely, uh, you know, written into law by Congress, as I said, strong bilateral support from both sides of the aisle have been behind this for uh, for many, many years.
Okay. Um, I know my colleague has another question, so I'll stop right there.
Keep going.
No, I was gonna ask your question.
I'm trying to understand how this EB five is gonna be impacted by the new gold card.
Yeah, the the message we we've asked.
That it's gonna be, it's gonna replace.
I, our understanding, um, you know, it is uh, is is that it won't be that the, you know, the gold card is is similar, but uh, as I read in the paper, five million dollars, not eight hundred, you know, thousand for the individual investor and that that uh, the intent is that both would would coexist. Now, the EB five program um, and law as written um, uh, runs through, uh, yeah, well, for new applications, September of twenty twenty six. So there's two more windows. Um, but all the experts we've spoken to expect the program to be extended because of the strong bilateral support in Congress. But the current law has two more years uh, left in it.
And and I I'm I'm trying to get caught up. I'm just trying to, it says, of course, president does not have authority to ignore or stop the program, but that hasn't stopped him in other areas either. And so if this is seen as a potential, what I wanna know is what it would cost for us to get up to speed to even understand it, let alone sign anything that would create. There there could be some other sensitivities around participating in EB five program that the president puts he has a competition to one of his pet projects, number one. Number two, uh, if we can't choose who would we would get in bed with as far as an investor, could that potentially also serve as a potential problem in the future? If we want this Colorado Air and Spaceport to serve as like an incubator advancement accelerator, or we wanna see potentially DoD DARPA, would we face issues of ITAR? Uh, I mean, like what I would want to do is place this into a situation where, again, for the short term, quick money, we're sacrificing long term strategic opportunities that could come back to haunt us if all of a sudden somebody from China is now an investor in something like this. And that prohibits us from working with the Space Force and working with DoD. And I'm so concerned about making sure that it it's a very, it's very obvious that space and DoD is very, and teranautics, so much in line that I would have to be really convinced and assured that there would be absolutely no risk to bring in an external foreign investors that could be seen as potentially their enemies. And then have sacrificed opportunities that we would want in the future.
Good. These are all very good questions, by the way, and these are questions we thought of. So we've vetted this through, um, yeah, one of the stronger EB five um, uh, sponsors, if you will, is here in Colorado. And we've met with others in Manhattan and other places as well. One of the stronger ones is here and they're associated with Brownstein, uh, the law firm, Norm Brownstein. Um, so we've asked these questions and we've gotten, um, uh, it's given us confidence that uh, that those considerations are not an issue. Now, we ought to get that in writing, um, and we ought to see, you know, really understand the sort of the mechanics behind that that protects that where there's protection. Part of it has to do with these investors, like these are minority investors, right? So they're not majority investors, which which allegedly makes difference.
Still have a fiduciary to all of the investors at some point and you're gonna make sure that we wouldn't.
Yeah, but they don't have visibility. They wouldn't have visibility and uh, operations, yeah, operation, top secret, considerations, they have no control.
And and they're, and they're.
That's different.
Investors and they 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 ultimately are investing for for, you know, um, four to five years max and then expect, you know, um, the return of their capital and uh, and it, you know, once the jobs have been proven, they have permanent residency and green cards and the tenants is being used all over the country and including in a critical military infrastructure, I point back to the Naval Shipyard in Philadelphia, um, you know, has has taken advantage of EB five funds and um, and even, uh, yeah, I mean, there there have been, again, at both sides of the aisle, I don't wanna say, but even uh, you know, family of the current president have taken advantage of this in development projects in New York. And yeah, so both both sides of the political aisle have supported this and used it heavily, um, you know, from both sides. And and for economic development and job creation in the US and using foreign capital for it.
If I could offer, you know, one, one or two ideas, one would be we could easily bring the Far Cap guys in here. They're the experts. Let them, you know, really talk through this with you more depth, in more depth than we are, than uh, we're capable of. Uh, and in addition, if there's, if there needs to be the understanding of underlying mechanics and uh, and sort of the considerations that you mentioned, Commissioner. Um, you know, we could, we could look for that, you know, where it's documented, if you will, uh, just to give some level of confidence.
And I think one thing I'd like to point out is basically what we're looking to do is fill out an application to certify the project. That's step one. You have, you have to fill out an application. You have to certify your project. Does it, once your project certified, then they would go raise funds. That doesn't mean you're obligated to take that. That just means that your project is certified, so you're able to explore that funding mechanism. And maybe in that process, it's a, it's a yes, man, this is great, or hey, we we have some concerns. But if you don't certify your project, you don't know. And and the rate of the capital on this is very low and the investors have no connectivity to your project. They're an outside investor and basically they're taken out in the process.
Sorry. Julie? It's actually for staff. So we are to this idea in this, these.
Do you have John on the phone?
Oh, okay.
He's here for the next presentation, but he has been listening. So he has his hand raised.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I I think we have, yeah, I'll call. Quick little pause procedural question. So John Russell is our federal um, lobbyist with Dentons, the Dentons Group. Um, I saw his hand raised. I didn't call on him because would he be considered a member of the public? Would he be considered a consultant member of our staff, like panelist, panelist? Um, that was my concern. Why I didn't call on John. So I'm looking at the attorney.
Yeah, I mean, I think he's your staff, even though he's he's county staff. So I think you could invite, it's like you would any of us who stood up and said, I.
So all Julie go and then John can hear us. I'm, yeah. John can hear us from the skies. So go ahead, Julie. Okay, so my question is for staff and John, you're welcome to jump in as needed. But um, as we're learning more about EB five, what work do we need to do as a county to understand this more, to assess press, to assess all of the different things we need to? They're talking about a pretty quick timeline as September.
Yeah.
What is, what would next steps look like for us? And would we be able to do anything within that timeline? I don't know if you, yeah, just take a stab.
I think if I could just lean really quickly on that, you do think it sounds like there's some interest, but I'm a lot more uh, I'm understanding of what the mechanism looks like. I think September sounds like a very ambitious timeline, um, and just kind of wondering with that timeline, if you miss the September timeframe, sort of what the next year would look like and are there other options or in the pipeline that are, you know, possibly filling this gap as I think September.
So.
Pretty ambitious to.
I'll I'll just add, we do have time to do some due diligence. What we're saying we need to do is go ahead and start the application process. Then we can do our due diligence over the next three, four, five months. So we've got time to do that, but we just need to start the application process. And then if we decide, hey, there's something that we don't like, we just pull the application. There's really no downside to starting the application process.
The only downside is is our some cost.
Yeah.
Because we have to pay, we have to pay for that. Which we're.
We.
We are.
You need us to sign that application.
I mean, look, we 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 think this is, there's great connectivity to the water project here. The water project seems super compelling, in my opinion. And then other, maybe we need to debate it and compare it to Aurora or any other option, whatever we need to, you know, look at the cost benefit, but it's super compelling, not just to CAS, but to Adams County.
The original.
Uh, and, you know, this sort of cost to capital is really rare. Uh, and it's like a perfect fit in the infrastructure considerations. Still, missing that window, uh, you know, would would probably not make it not relevant for the water project. We'd have to look for another opportunity. But it's just such a good fit and as you know, water is such an important issue.
Okay. John?
Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you uh, very much for zooming me in. Uh, Commissioner Odericio, you made a comment about the gold card. The gold card still needs to be codified into law. It exists in the president's hand, but nowhere really else. Uh, the gentleman, as they have laid out, the uh, the EB five program and its support, they're exactly correct. Um, that is, in fact, uh, how it is portrayed here in Washington and it has been utilized uh, by by developments uh, across the country. I have sent to staff a copy of a Congressional Research Service Report on the EB five program, uh, that hopefully they can share with you so you can get up to, get a little bit up to speed on it. Uh, but I just wanted to clarify uh, for you, uh, Commissioner Odericio, that uh, the gold card is is still a theory. And this, the EB five, in fact, is uh, very, very, very real.
Thank you. I I get that it's real. I just also, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Hasn't always stayed within its lane either, so.
No, sir.
Okay, Julie? Sorry, all these questions. How much does it cost to submit an application?
A lot.
So if we submit the application, it's not like it's, we don't lose, it's, it's not like we don't lose anything. We lose money.
We do.
We we do. We do not.
Yes.
Alright.
Which we're here telling you that we're willing to consider that for super cost. I'm sorry.
How much money? Do you have an idea? Are we talking about a thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, a billion dollars?
It's a big number.
It's big. Okay, real big.
Super major.
Super major.
Um, I appreciate, I appreciate this reassurance that others have utilized this process. We would be, as I understand it from our staff, the first in Colorado to utilize this process.
That's not, I don't think that's true, right? Now, for for infrastructure, yes, but there are different aspects of EB five beyond infrastructure. Or has it been the last in Congress?
The Great Hall. Okay.
No, the Great Hall?
Great Hall was. At Denver International Airport?
No.
No.
You're the expert. Yeah, not the, not the Great Hall.
We could certainly pull.
Colorado.
Some data, but yeah.
So I think in the, in the RFP that we're asking, the ask is, can we move forward? The ask is, can we move forward with issuing an RFP to get respondents to come in? To, you know, to respond to the RFP, to answer the questions. And part of that in that document is. You know, are you, you know, do you exist in the state of Colorado? What projects have you, have you done a project with EB five in Colorado? And then we can vet the firms, um, that do the EB five and we can answer those questions. She's asking the practice of EB five has, has it been utilized in Colorado?
But not for infrastructure.
Yes, but not for infrastructure. So I have a, I appreciate that y'all are so interested in this, that you. Consider the application costs to be worth it and pursue the opportunity. That does symbolize to me how much y'all care about this opportunity and I appreciate that. We, in our discussion, feel like we would have some internal costs as well. Um, to prepare our own legal analysis and our framework. And so we'll have to have some conversations with our staff about that moving forward. Chat with Oette to see if they can share with us how other jurisdictions have used it, even if it's not for infrastructure. Just sort of touch our bases and like, here's why. And John, if you have a comment, uh, it's Commissioner Pinter, if you can't. Tell our voices from the sky. Um, I'm concerned that. To be blunt, the Trump administration's Homeland Security Security Assessment. Might have a different framework than future administrations. And so risk that seems tolerable for this administration might be extreme. For the next or subsequent administrations. And so. And I say that because this current administration has made a point of. Engaging in rough negotiations with neighbor states. In a different priority list than previous administrations. So if the person doing the evaluation. Has a different sec- national security threat assessment yardstick. Than the next or subsequent administrations, do we get left holding a bag? And how do we tell?
I mean, my, my.
Can let John, I read that.
Oh, yeah. You're, you're speaking of that, John. I'm sorry. I thought you were speaking to me.
Oh, no, John, please take it.
I had a really good answer, bro.
Commissioner Pinter, you ask a very good question and I, I apologize, my crystal ball is, uh, is, is somewhat cloudy. These days, I would say changes in administrations do bring, um, and this administration clearly is, 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 is. Is unique in what they have done here in this, uh, since January. That, that said, the fact that there are different priorities and that differ not only between parties, but even in the same party with a different person. Is, is kind of part of the risk you take. As far as getting left holding the bag. Um, I think that what, what would have to happen there is we would have to engage our, our federal, um, delegation. And make sure that they were certainly well briefed and ready into this program, supportive of it. And, uh, then we would need them fighting for us, but you've, you, you do nail a, um, a very good point, which is. Where, where do we go from here and where will we be in six years? Um, I think you can take a, a somewhat of a, if, if you will, a future looking, um. Perspective of this will be a facility unique in the Western United States that will be important. To, uh, to the United States, both from a national security perspective, and you can make an argument for, uh, the commerce perspective as well. Uh, it's going to be important to Colorado. And, uh, I think we could, you, we, we would need to, as we, as we did when we got the license. Make darn sure that everybody in our delegation was on the same page and supportive. As to how it could possibly change in, in a new administration, um, I, I, you could certainly see. Um, a, a de-escalation of concern in and around China, though I would say that that's probably the only bipartisan thing in Washington at the moment. Uh, but it does go back to the support for this program, which is, which is in fact, uh, it is bipartisan. And I'd, I'd argue that, um, they've had success. So, um, the, these projects have been successful. Um, so I, I don't, I, I think that we would be. We would be in good, um, we, I think we would be passing, if we pass the security, um. Um, assessment in this administration, I would argue we would be probably in good stead moving forward.
And ju- just thank you, John, for answering that, because I wouldn't answer it that way. That was great. Um, but, uh, just one other consideration. You, you use the term holding the bag. I mean, the, the risk, besides the lea- internal legal costs and. Uh, and I don't know, maybe, maybe being involved in a decision that didn't work out from, right? There's really no risk to the county, if you really think about it. The downside's on us, like we're, we're working with the sponsor of this project. We're helping enable. Adams County, um, Adams County's, the, the, the P three's connection into the project, we're making the investment, right? Um, so the downside is, again, the internal costs for legal work and so on, which isn't near what we're spending for the application, by the way. Um, and maybe some reputational kind of things, because you get involved in something that doesn't work out, which I'm naive to that, uh, truthfully, because I haven't been in the. You know, a, a leader in the public sector like you all are. And maybe that's the overriding point that you're trying to make.
That is certainly in the neighborhood of the point I'm trying to make, because it, it, uh, it's just food for thought. This is really helpful.
I'm gonna hop in here, um. I want to thank both the Johns, John Russell, for your. Guidance on that and reassurance, um. I'm taking a pause. I'm not, I really appreciate John Russell. I appreciate what you also had to say regarding infrastructure. I recently traveled on behalf of the Colorado Air and Spaceport and. I shared, I have a report that I need to, um, I promised to make to my board, also the county manager. Um, to know, get a different perspective when you are out of the country. It offers you a different perspective, not only personally, but. You know, where do we size up as a spaceport? Where, where is our space, you know, literally, where do we fit in in the space? Air industry, drone industry and going to the largest. Convention, expo, airshow that does this is that there's a lot of interest in Colorado. So out of twenty-five hundred exhibitors across six hangars, a mile of static. Um, displays, including, you know, all, all the things, anything in the air that's not a, an animal was there. Um, so it's really interesting is that. People sought out the booth for the state of Colorado. People knew that the state of Colorado, that it was our first time attending. So we attended with. Oette, with the Office of Economic Development and International Trade. Um, so there's a huge. Interest in the spaceport. There's a huge interest in Colorado. The reason for my pause is, is that I have a pretty heavy dose of uncertainty while there is bipartisan. Support here is that there is a bigger dose of uncertainty politically. What does this look like? Because going through the passing of the HR one is that we. Politically, I'm going to be real vulnerable here. Um, we have some congressional members that don't respond to us. We have some that, uh, respond to us and accuse the state, which they're not the representative of the state, they're representative of district. Um, that we're sanctuary, county, city, state, whatever you want to call it. Um, and then we have some that are very in line and in step with us, especially when it comes to. Um, support of the spaceport, support of business, support of innovation. What does that next step look like for Colorado? I think today, I'm gonna leap out a little bit. I think we need to do our due diligence, diligence as a county. And I think if we can come together as a board very quickly. Um, and talk about some of our concerns, what do the next steps look like? I think that was, um, a really valuable question that you had. Um, this is super exciting. And, you know, in RFP, if we can get investors. I don't want our relationship to sour if you sink your money in. We also have some money that we've talked about that we would sink in to look at this. We've not done in, we've not done this process. Um. I don't want our relationship to sour if this goes forward in application and you sink your money in and it doesn't work out. And we try to take a second bite at the apple. Um, I'd rather go forward that we have some pretty solid footing and that we're confident. Because it sounds like we, as, even though you would fill out the application, it would be our project. Is that correct in stating that?
It would be really in the spirit of, of the P three. So, so Adams County would be a party to it. And we need, we need, you know, a government entity in Adams. But it's absolutely us as well, you know, so it's not, it's not you unilaterally in, in any stretch, but you need to be a party to it. And, and, and effectively, the, the county is deemed to be the job creating entity as, as part of this, you know, just from the legal.
So those are my thoughts today. I just want to continue the conversation. Yes.
Yeah, first of all, appreciate all that. Uh, by the way, thank you. And the, you know, you mentioned the, the Paris Air Show. I mean, we're regulars there. We weren't there this year with you, unfortunately. Uh, and we, we play in that sandbox and that's why I started the conversation by. Underscoring how unique this opportunity is. We know that there's interest in Colorado. The trick here, though. Um, you know, is relative to other certified spaceports and even regional airports, right? There are infrastructure considerations here that are significant. Um, and, and by the way, there are also. Incentive differences across states that are significant. And we have to find any, uh, you know, we, we have to, we have to find a. A reasonably quick pathway to solve for the infrastructure and maybe, I mean, you know, which, which would help balance out. Where we lag on incentives that we're offering, right? In our opinion, uh, because there's definitely interest, but you. We can't put anybody on property if we don't have power and water, right? And, and, and I get, you know, the, the measured approach that you're recommending is great. Like I totally embrace that and support that. Uh, but we also have to realize that there's been a lot of years where there's been hardly any development on the property and. We're here to help enable that, get creative, try to be, um, have a sense of urgency around it, right? That's why we're here, so. But it's a public-private partnership and that, that debate that we're having is very healthy. Um, so, yeah, so thank you. I appreciate that. For sure. And I agree with you.
So. No, um, thank you. So I'm gonna turn the tables here. I've, I've got a question for Alicia. On, um, RFP process. How long are we talking? Two weeks? Are we talking five weeks?
Two to five, probably. Um. We can do some direct then, but we post for a good three to four weeks and then we determine. Um, so the one piece that really does need to be conducted is that broker relationship. So I know that John mentioned earlier that you could bring somebody down if they would.
Right, I see, right. So, and I can appreciate the Commissioner's concern about souring the relationship if we write a check, right? And then it doesn't work out. I guess maybe we rephrase our ask for the commission and our ask is, could we get approval to work with staff? To get through this RFP process. That's five weeks. Then we can all do due diligence, right? While that's going on. Right. We're not writing any checks in that five weeks anyways, most likely. So that risk is out the door to alleviate your concern. Um, so would that be something that we could, could look at? RFP, get that process going and then buy us time to do due diligence with you guys.
I'm sorry, can you, can somebody clarify for me what hap- when you say five weeks, five weeks, what, before we would go out for our, like, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Move out quicker than that. That's the, that would be what I would anticipate the process to be. Uh, I mean, in that case, you'd want to make quite clear that. If the project doesn't move forward because of due diligence, whatever. Then the, it may not be awarded. We include that language in all of our deals really, but we want to make that a lot more clear. In this case, given that you'd want a side-by-side of due diligence process.
Pause today, like what?
It was literally in the moment of.
Okay.
Where I was at. So not a, I'm not proposing that we pause this at all. I still want the conversation to continue. And that we still tease out questions from the board, um, further clarification or questions from the panel.
Okay, but I meant, were you talking about? As in not giving them an answer today on the RFP process? Like you want more time for us as a board to discern that? I wasn't sure.
My, my pause was that I just feel some. Political uncertainty. Um, in leadership and that leadership means it goes all the way to the president that. Well, part of it may be exciting. It certainly is exciting for, we, we live in two Adams Counties right now. One is business friendly, um, presidential Trump, President Trump. Other one is when it comes to our social programs, not so friendly and very challenging. And so it is very exciting when we look at the business aspect of CAS, the P three, this potential process. The leadership really has not demonstrated a- any concrete. Everything is up for discussion is what I feel like. And I really have a fear. Me personally not speaking for the board, um, of what does that discussion look like? We've been on the radar. Um, one of our cities is clearly on the radar. That's not influencing my decision. It's really the uncertainty and that there is no. Consistent, um, behavior from the president and or the party that. I feel like we're, we're wading into s- some uncertainty politically here. That is only my, that's my concern as. One county commissioner on this board. Um, the process is in place. It's been in place. It's been successful. I hear that. I understand that. I think I want to learn more about the process and what our role is. So maybe not a pause, like we're gonna put a pin in it. We're not looking at this for three hundred and sixty-five days. I feel like I need some more information.
Fair enough.
So, um. This has been a very helpful conversation because honestly, I've never heard of EB five before today. So. Um, this has all been very educational. Um, there's a lot of, um, you know, there's some. It makes me a little uncomfortable just because I don't know much about this program and, you know, there's some questions that we have lingering out there. Um, one of the things I'm kind of circling back to though is, you know, we as a board hasn't, have identified. CAS and this project as. If not number one, number two priority for this board.
Yep, agreed.
And hands down, like this is a very important project that we want to make sure is done right, that is done well. And that is done, um, efficiently because we honestly believe, as you do. Um, in the potential that it's going to essentially transform this region. So, um. That obviously puts it really high on the priority list for us. My question is, so like. RFP process, we're talking five weeks. Because this is such a huge board priority, can we accelerate that? Is there something from staff that we could do to get us in a position where we could get some of our answers, our questions answered? To move quickly on this particular item. This is a, a very large board priority. So we want to be able to, to. Prioritize this with all the, lots of other work we're doing, but I mean, uh, that is just one of the things I'm coming back to. So. I guess what, what could be next steps? How can we potentially make a September? Application happen? Um, and maybe you guys need time to come back to us for that, but. I, I actually want to see if we could pull it off. So what would that look like?
Okay, so I hope. Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And also I, I think the conversation about the timeline is really helpful. Alicia and I were just chatting about. Realistically, what is the capacity of our procurement team, Alicia's team to turn around? An RFP, um, with other, we have some other larger RFPs that are also kind of coming together in the next few weeks. And just to level set that we want to make sure that if this is the top priority, we probably would have to pull out all stops to get to five weeks. And so less than that would really require an effort, which we can do, I think, but I do want to just state that we, we have some other things on deck. Other RFPs that are, we're gonna have to move around some capacity. You probably need to talk about that a little bit, how to make that. Happen and make sure at the end of it that we are getting to a point that you're able to, you know, really make a, a informed decision sometime in the next four weeks. Definitely be able to pull that together. And so analysis probably from Heidi's team, you know, just kind of what that due diligence would look like over the next weeks with. Some of the other things that are in the hopper as well. Okay. And likely needing to bring in some additional legal assistance.
I hear that. So Emma and then back to the panel.
No, you're fine.
Okay, so what I feel like I'm hearing is the board has questions. We need to do our own internal. Legal analysis, um, beyond just what our staff can do. This is international economic development, so it's a different animal. That what we do. Than what we do day in and day out, and so that would require special counsel, consultant counsel for us to work with. As well as inquiry to vet it, to see if they can offer any technical assistance on our end as a local government. And at the risk of being bold, presidents come and go, Adams County continues. And so we want to make sure we're caring for Adams County in the future, that's our priority.
Yes, sure.
We want to get this right. We are so thrilled to have y'all here and your expertise, you are already making magic happen. We just, you know, government has to be more cautious. Thank you for understanding that we're trying to dot our i's and cross our t's. And so I don't see an issue with moving forward with an RFP concurrent. To our research. If our research can be completed and I'll do it with post haste, I'm sure. At such time as the RFP concludes approximately five weeks from now, so that we have both the information, yes, this type of decision. Is a good idea and here's why. And also we vetted, and since you've made that decision, here is the partner that the RFP process recommends, that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay, Kathy?
Yeah, I would just say, I, this is a high priority, and I was thinking the same thing, and this because, and I think it. I think, thank you for for bringing this forward, I think it's given us all a lot to think about, and we have to also. For I'm speaking for myself, if we want to. Cast to be what we. What we dream it can be, then we have to maybe think differently than we have, at least I have to maybe think differently about things, so getting that information. Concurrently, as Emma stated, is I'm comfortable with that, I think it's a good choice.
Okay, I'm gonna hop in here, Julie and Steve. I want to echo what Emma said is that we are thrilled to have you as a partner. Oh, I didn't get back to you, I'm so sorry. Thanks for coming along this little journey, um, this is how we work things out, we just had a team building yesterday, yeah.
To the brain.
Exactly, very chatty, very chatty group. Thank you, Julie, for really honing in that this is a priority and that this board. When we're all in, we're all in, and we want to make transformational change. And whether that is small business, that is our residence, it's business innovation, air and spaceport. We have a gem, we understand more and more every day that we have a gem here in Adams County. So I am also, you know, take votes in study session, I would also support the concurrent, which was your ask, look at an RFP. While both parties do their due diligence, so I actually would support that today. I'm good with that, I have more to say, but Julie and Steve, then we'll go to the panel.
You know where I'm at, I support.
Yeah, when you say support what today specifically are you saying?
The bottom, so the RFP for the EB five services concurrently with staff. Doing their.
Meaning that we come back together in approximately five weeks to. Bring light. And and another decision point.
I'm worried about. What happens if we get cold feet in five weeks? I I would like for us to at least circle wagons internally in five days, you know, kind of things. And and start working on that, last thing I want to do is have our partners potentially lose money. Because we get cold feet at the end for whatever reason it might be, there's a lot of volatility at the federal level that makes me concerned. Both, and it's more than just a fiscal analysis, there's a, there's a, there is a political analysis, there's a risk analysis there. And I absolutely, if if, how long did it take you to do your analysis of all those questions that I asked? Was it a couple hours, a couple days, a few weeks?
It's been many months.
So so just, I I appreciate the grace and and understanding that the questions that I asked, that you said you guys went through deep, 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 and it took months to do. I've still only been in this conversation for an hour now, and so if there's stuff that you have that addresses those items, please pass those along to staff. Because it might speed up catching someone like me up. I'm kind of slow, so I need to be able to get caught up on these things, but I am concerned about. Both the political, the economic. And I just don't want. To shut the door on options, I just think the more options you have, the better options, the better they are. And the same goes water, high power ping, pavement, people, all those things together that you need for a strong project. Yeah, so same thing goes with the water, and and it's honestly, I agree, I don't want to be beholden to, or going back to water. I don't want to be beholden to anybody, but that also means that until you actually have a couple different options. And your best alternative to the one in front of you always helps sweeten the one in front of you. And it gives us power, so I'm going to make sure that we have as many. As much flexibility and options as possible.
I did have one, a couple of follow ups, a question for staff, question then for the panel, so my question for staff is. Not just our own Adams County congressional delegation, both the senators are also interested in CASP. It is the Colorado Air and Spaceport, so I think we need to get the entire Colorado delegation. Even outside of this process, altitude X, for the, for Colorado Air and Spaceport, for the future, is it's the entire Colorado delegation. There was one state at the airshow or at the expo that had their entire state, they had the, all the state congressional delegates were there. And that ricocheted through all of the state booths that were also there, so. That's my one thing is that legislatively, we need to start rounding that, I don't know if that's something that Seawald Hamfling that we can. They can add capacity to our staff on what that looks like as far as stakeholding. And then my ask for the panel is, this will put us in the timeframe of about, if you can bring it back and if it's available, what your project total cost would be. Your estimates. I think that would give us some, what does the stack look like as far as?
For the whole project or for just?
Water, 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 water.
What what's our cost?
Um, to construct, build, design.
Project. The cost for the water, and what is EB, what gap is EB five filling?
Yes.
And that's still a valid question, because we're big picture folks that need to understand whether you're building an apartment, whether you're building whatever.
Is EB ten percent, seventy-five percent, yeah.
We banging our head against the wall for a million bucks, or we banging our head on the wall for like, you know, twenty-five percent of the cost of this? And then what happens if we said no to the EB five, does that take out the whole thing? And then also, like, at the end of this process, what is the final product or outcome that we're gonna have? Is it going to be, we will have a water project that will be governed and owned by a special district that we control? Or that we control together with you, or, and then what happens? If the five of you and the five of us are not here in seven years from now, and then and the relationship goes to crap? What happens in that scenario? How do we also decide who gets the excess water beyond what we need for Colorado Air and Spaceport to go to some of our neighboring? Who decides that? And is it going to be us making a decision based on governmental and land use needs? Or is it going to be based on the private sector squeezing the other private sector folks who need to access to water? All those things that I, you need to understand the big picture.
Yeah. Okay, my apologies.
No.
Back to the panels.
Yeah.
Back to us?
Yes.
Yeah, this is kind of a closing comment time on this topic. All right, all right, good. First of all, I just want to thank you, I thought this was a good discussion, we understand the. The the need for a measured approach, we get all that totally, we understand that. You're, you know, you're, you have very smart questions around this and, so I think we landed in a good place, I want to thank you. You know, as we have all, you know, explained, you know, this is a really exciting opportunity, you're referring to it as a gem, and you're right, it is a gem. You know, we have to solve for these infrastructure considerations, and if we wait on utility or other. Water sources in the future, or whatever it may be, it could be, you know, six to eight years, like, and and keep in mind, others are clamoring. For power and water as well in this region, so there's a sort of a competitive stack there. And that's why we're putting so much energy into trying to be creative and trying to position things with a cost of capital that to us makes a lot of sense. And is, there's enormous precedence, as Charles gave you a few examples. You know, remember also, this is a overall, you know, the, you know, we haven't gotten to this yet, but our vision around CASP and executing it the right way is a billion plus dollars of. Development over a ten, twelve year plus timeline. And for us, you know, time is money, right? Like, you know, we 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 have a staff on this, we are spending a lot of money on surveys. And all sorts of things, and that's just a consideration to us, and I and I recognize there's a process, a government process that's incredibly important, transparency is incredible. We we know all those dynamics, but just please, tuck in the back of your mind that to us, time is money, for sure, and we think we have a good approach here. There may be, through your diligence, something, you know, that that just isn't a fit, right? For the political considerations, whatever it may be, that's fine, the quicker we can get to those kind of conclusions, the better, because time's money. And and we we would like to have the opportunity to find other alternatives, but we wouldn't be here today if we didn't think this was a a really good alternative that has. Yeah, it's compelling, that has precedence, right? Okay, so thank you, is the the punchline. We 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 have other slides, which we don't need to do now, because what I wanted to do is tell you the story arc. And then focus on power, water and EB five, if you like, I could click through them quickly, you have them in the handout. But we ought to, we we, you know, our intent or desire, I should say, not intent, is to have more routine touchpoints with you where we can deep dive you into these. Like, you you see how productive this is, right? Well, we could, we could have the same discussion around workforce development, which would be a very exciting and fun discussion to have. There are different areas within the story arc that, you know, we we would like to be back up here and both speaking about, we're ready for that, by the way, all right?
Okay, okay. Couple more slides?
Do you want me to, yeah, good.
No, I'm sorry. Just a quick kind of time check, as we're thinking about that, and I asked Katie to step in, we have a pretty significant update on human services funding that. I know we've got John on the line, we've got the team, and just want to make sure we're good with proceeding with the human services update, and you know, we're. Four forty, so just, just. Can play out where you have a different thought.
I think we should wrap it up. And then get, and get the back on the calendar.
You have our slides exhibit the story arc, and together we'll figure out what the next deep dive topics are, and we're, you know, excited to come back and talk about them.
We might need to get back together before five weeks.
Sure.
All right, very soon.
We set a session tomorrow, we can add this if we need to follow up, and we also have a five on one meeting with Heidi tomorrow that's already been scheduled. Way out in advance. Nice, that sounds great.
Can I clarify one thing? You say September, are you talking about September first or September thirty?
I think it's the sixteenth, it's in my head, but it's a mid-September date.
Exactly.
Two weeks. I think it's that date would be helpful.
Questions there, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just note that the Pago and establish that's a sixty voter in the Senate. Um they will extend and do whatever they have to do not to trip the Pago line. Well, so it's something we need to watch. It will it might be rhetorically hot from a actual scene it's signed by the president. Not going to happen.
Thank you. So as you are hearing with how connected you are, the major political discussions are the Medicaid impacts and loss of healthcare coverage, the increased administrative burdens, so less funding to do a lot more work. The rural health healthcare impacts due to the cap on provider taxes and we will dive into this. I want to just make a couple of notes as to why this is impactful in Colorado. Um so historically, Colorado has used the provider taxes on healthcare providers like hospitals or nursing homes to generate revenue that is used to fund the state's share of Medicaid spending. So that the spending often augmented by provider tax revenue is then used to draw down that federal funding and that federal match, uh which ultimately helped us do some of our expansion categories and helped us fund things such as county administration of the programming. Uh so the provider, uh the rule, the piece of this in terms of uh healthcare tax doesn't just hurt the the um rural area hospitals that you're hearing about maybe having to close their doors. It also does impact the statewide budget around how Medicaid is funded and the administration uh funding here in Colorado, which is specific here and something that we will have to wait and see what happens uh at the state legislature in terms of how they will respond uh to any deficit uh related to the way that the uh provider uh tax uh rolls out for us. Uh at the end of the presentation, if we need to dig down a little bit deeper into the political impacts, I'm really grateful for John again uh from DGA being on the phone, uh but just wanted to give a a quick overview of a kind of the political landscape that we know uh you all are very connected with. The key areas uh that are impacted that we want to talk through today are Medicaid app and WEOWA. I want to note for you that WEOWA, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act is not labeled in HR1. That is actually an HR six, six, five. Um it has not passed yet uh out of the House. It did pass in twenty twenty-four uh through uh the Senate or through the House. And so we anticipate that there will be a vote on that in the September timeframe, um where there is a lot of bipartisan support for that. So we will uh talk about what we anticipate in terms of the Workforce Innovation Act, uh but did want to distinguish for you that that is not under HR1. It is underneath a different a piece of lega- legislation. Uh we are not through HR1. There are a lot of rumors. Uh there were a lot of moving pieces. There are a lot of things that were in the bill and then out of the bill. The things that are not included uh are changes to the low-income energy assistance program, changes to SSBG. And as a reminder, that's mainly that child welfare funding that I noted. There are not changes to Head Start. There are not changes to TANF uh in HR1. There is not changes to childcare assistance and there are not changes to child support services.
Even in, sorry, if I can ask, even so is TANF something, is that a an annual qualification for that or so that do they? So even their qualification was not increased or?
Uh we anticipate that we will see changes potentially to TANF through the reauthorization timeline, which would be the September, October timeline. Um and we'll talk a little bit about that. I don't anticipate that those will be uh big changes and if uh things happen as they have historically. Um we we tend to see that reauthorization reauthorization get kicked down uh the road. So uh we've not seen action on it for several years, but we are tracking uh the potential cuts there as well. Thank you. Doesn't work. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Cricket to talk to us about Medicaid specifically. Uh before I uh turn it over, though, I want to talk about the numbers that you see at the top of each one of these slides. Uh we have been asked for projections around uh maybe how many FTE might this impact or how many residents might this impact? It's too soon for us to uh really be able to model uh without some of the state decisions, the exact number of residents who will be impacted by this. So what we're giving you here is how many team members are working these cases uh or doing this work for us within these programs? And then we're giving you how many uh residents in twenty twenty-four received services through those programs. Uh knowing that we can probably kind of guesstimate a little bit and you'll see where the those estimates are from our early work on that. Uh but I want I don't want there to be a takeaway that we're talking that this will impact two hundred and seventeen team members. Uh really what we were trying to do here was just give you the big broad picture of how many team members are doing the work within the county within these particular areas.
That Julian County. Yeah. Can you briefly um outline what's the state decision points are when you say that? What is? What does that mean? What does the state have to decide on?
We will definitely talk about that throughout the presentation. The majority of this uh from our understanding will direct states to do things within um a certain requirement, but then states have the opportunity to opt in or opt out of certain provisions. Um and we'll talk about that. They also have uh the opportunity uh to further define how we might want to do work requirements, for example. So there's some states might choose that people have to do uh work requirements three months prior to receiving Medicaid where that's the maximum. Uh the minimum would be one month. I would imagine Colorado would probably land on the one-month decision there. Uh but there are some decisions that are going to have to be made at the state uh oversight agencies before we have the actual detail.
Okay, that's helpful.
Go ahead, Cricket.
Thanks, Katie. Um yeah, so just going to start with, we have about two hundred and seventeen team members who are processing eligibility across Medicaid and SNAP. Um in Medicaid, we served about two hundred and thirteen thousand residents um in calendar year twenty-four. So we're on track to serve about that many. Again, this year, we serve a large portion of our population in Adams County through Medicaid. Um a lot of the changes that I'm going to talk about have impacts to both operations and our community. And I am going to discuss some things that uh aren't necessarily covered on the slide because we got new information as the bill was signed in. Um so Katie already mentioned the provider tax changes. We really don't know how that is going to impact us. As those provider taxes are reduced, there will be a need for Colorado to contribute more money in order to draw down our federal funds. Whether that is charged back to counties, you don't know. So uh sort of an unknown there about how that's going to impact us operationally. There is some cost sharing in. Sorry, I have one quick question. Was there uh in addition to capping the provide or just provider fees or? They call it a provider tax? Okay, and I think John is trying to weigh in.
No, you're 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 you. I just it is not a fee, although fees can be taxes. Remember, this is everybody from well, let me let me rewind. Forty-nine states uh utilize some form of provider taxes, everything from hospitals all the way to ambulances and uh health plans that pay into this. Um and states then take that money and redistribute it to throughout the healthcare system. Um and Cricket's absolutely correct. Um there are this the hospitals themselves who are not used to losing, I have to say politically speaking, are are running the numbers now and really trying to figure out exactly what these impacts are. Recall that there was for rural hospitals, a I want to, if I remember correctly, it's fifty billion. Um but twenty-five also sounds familiar and I'm sorry, it's uh there are lots of numbers floating around, but a reserve fund was set up to supposedly smooth some of this over. This is going to be a very big pressure point. States have begun to utilize these provider taxes more and more and more as they have expanded healthcare efforts and they are losing that opportunity.
Thank you. And then my question was, do they institute a co-pay for Medicaid recipients? So they did. That is the cost sharing mentioned on here. Uh this is specific to our expansion populations. So those who um are receiving Medicaid but above a hundred percent of the federal poverty level will have a cost share or a co-pay essentially uh for services that are non-emergent and non-primary care, if that makes sense. So uh I'm thinking of visits that aren't your annual wellness check, but maybe I'm going in because I have a sinus infection. And so people do not go to the doctor because the co-pay then those provider taxes also are not generating. Is that correct?
Those are.
That is not correct.
You know, those are two separate things. The the state sets the provider tax number, as I understand it, and the providers pay it. It is separate and apart from who's coming in the door.
Thank you. Yeah. Um so this cost sharing, uh states are allowed to set it. So this is one of the areas that we will see a state decision on. It has to be greater than zero, but no more than thirty-five dollars per visit. Um and that will generate revenue, which will go back to meeting our our federal drawdown. So that state decision could potentially impact our county funding. Um next on there, effective uh December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, which is a very odd date, I will say for an eligibility rule. Uh there will be more frequent redeterminations for Medicaid. So right now, we conduct eligibility redeterminations for Medicaid every twelve months. For that expansion population, again, we will be doing those every six months. Uh we anticipate that this is roughly forty thousand individuals in Adams County. That's a very rough projection based on how many folks in the state um are expanded. This is a data point we can't quite get to in the system, so we sort of rely on a projection based on the statewide caseload. Um this equates to roughly a thousand additional actions that workers have to take per month in the system. Um it doubles our workload related to Medicaid. The second is that effective, again, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, there are work requirements for Medicaid. This is an eighty-hour-per-month work education or some other community engagement requirement for nineteen to sixty-four-year-olds. There are some exemptions here, so veterans with disabilities, parents with children thirteen or younger, folks who are pregnant, former foster youth up to twenty-six, and individuals who are deemed medically frail are exempt from work requirements. Uh the very interesting piece about the way this legislation is written is that individuals have to demonstrate that they've met that before they are eligible. So unlike other work requirements, which say in order to maintain eligibility, you have to engage in some sort of work or community service. Knowing that we can probably kind of guesstimate a little bit and you'll see where the those estimates are from our early work on that. But I want I don't want there to be a takeaway that we're talking that this will impact two hundred and seventeen team members. Really what we were trying to do here was just give you the big broad picture of how many team members are doing the work within the county within these particular areas.
Can you briefly? Outline what's the state decision points are when you say that? What is? What does that mean? What does the state have to decide on?
We will definitely talk about that throughout the presentation. The majority of this. From our understanding will direct states to do things within. A certain requirement, but then states have the opportunity to opt in or opt out of certain provisions. And we'll talk about that. They also have. The opportunity to further define how we might want to do work requirements, for example. So there's some states might choose that people have to do work requirements three months prior to receiving Medicaid. Where that's the maximum, the minimum would be one month. I would imagine Colorado would probably land on the one month decision there. But there are some decisions that are going to have to be made at the state oversight agencies before we have the actual detail.
Okay, that's helpful.
Thanks Katie. Yeah, so just gonna start with, we have about two hundred and seventeen team members who are processing eligibility across Medicaid and SNAP. In Medicaid, we served about two hundred and thirteen thousand residents in calendar year twenty four. So we're on track to serve about that many again this year. We serve a large portion of our population in Adams County through Medicaid. A lot of the changes that I'm going to talk about have impacts to both operations and our community. And I am going to discuss some things that aren't necessarily covered on the slide because we got new information as the bill was signed in. So Katie already mentioned the provider tax changes. We really don't know how that is going to impact us as those provider taxes are reduced. There will be a need for Colorado to contribute more money in order to draw down our federal funds. Whether that is charged back to counties, you know. So sort of an unknown there about how that's going to impact us operationally. There is some cost sharing in.
Sorry, I have one quick question. Was there? In addition to capping the provide or provider fees or?
They call it a provider tax. Okay, and I think John is trying to weigh in.
No, you're 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 you. I just it is not a fee, although fees can be taxes. Remember, this is everybody from. Well, let me let me rewind forty nine states utilize some form of provider taxes, everything from hospitals. All the way to ambulances and health plans that pay into this. And states then take that money and redistribute it to throughout the healthcare system. And Cricket's absolutely correct. There are this, the hospitals themselves who are not used to losing, I have to say politically speaking. Are are running the numbers now and really trying to figure out exactly what these impacts are. Recall that there was for rural hospitals. A one, if I remember correctly, it's fifty billion. But twenty five also sounds familiar and I'm sorry, it's there are lots of numbers floating around, but a reserve fund was set up to supposedly smooth some of this over. This is going to be a very big pressure point. States have begun to utilize these provider taxes more and more and more. As they have expanded healthcare efforts and they are losing that opportunity.
Thank you. And then my question was, do they institute a co-pay for Medicaid recipients?
So they did. That is the cost sharing mentioned on here. This is specific to our expansion populations. So those who are receiving Medicaid but above a hundred percent of the federal poverty level. Will have a cost share or a co-pay essentially. For services that are non-emergent and non-primary care, if that makes sense. So I'm thinking of visits that aren't your annual wellness check, but maybe I'm going in because I have a sinus infection.
And so people do not go to doctor because the co-pay then those provider taxes also are not generating. Is that correct?
Those are. That is not correct.
Those are two separate things. The the state sets the provider tax number, as I understand it, and the providers pay it. It is separate and apart from who's coming in the door.
Thank you.
Yeah. So this cost sharing states are allowed to set it. So this is one of the areas that we will see a state decision on. It has to be greater than zero, but no more than thirty five dollars per visit. And that will generate revenue, which will go back to meeting our our federal drawdown. So that state decision could potentially impact our county funding. Next on there, effective December thirty first, twenty twenty six, which is a very odd date, I will say for an eligibility rule. There will be more frequent redeterminations for Medicaid. So right now we conduct eligibility redeterminations for Medicaid every twelve months. For that expansion population, again, we will be doing those every six months. We anticipate that this is roughly forty thousand individuals in Adams County. That's a very rough projection based on how many folks in the state. Are expanded. This is a data point we can't quite get to in the system. So we sort of rely on a projection based on the statewide caseload. This equates to roughly a thousand. Additional actions that workers have to take per month in the system. It doubles our workload related to Medicaid. The second is that effective again, December thirty first, twenty twenty six, there are work requirements for Medicaid. This is an eighty hour per month work education or some other community engagement requirement for nineteen to sixty four year olds. There are some exemptions here, so veterans with disabilities, parents with children thirteen or younger. Folks who are pregnant, former foster youth up to twenty six. And individuals who are deemed medically frail are exempt from work requirements. The very interesting piece about the way this legislation is written is that individuals have to demonstrate that they've met that before they are eligible. So unlike other work requirements, which say in order to maintain eligibility, you have to engage in some sort of work or community service. This has to be met prior to eligibility. So that is different than the other work requirements that we are used to. Effective January first, twenty twenty seven, we have more frequent verification. So this speaks to again, some administrative burden, both for staff and for our community. Who might be asked to provide additional information to us based on other data sources that we're looking at. Effective October first, twenty twenty six. We have some limitations around medical Medicaid eligibility for folks who are lawfully present. It does remove eligibility for some longstanding sort of folks who. Aren't Cuban and Haitian entrance. So this this gets a little weedy, but there are some folks who are here legally who will not be eligible for Medicaid. This also includes folks that might maintain residency in another country. So if they're unwilling to give up that connection to their home country, they could be ineligible for Medicaid. We think this can play out in rules in in different ways. So again, we will. We will react to the federal rule language and our state rule language around this. But an interesting piece of coverage that we have not had to look at before. Another change is effective December thirty first, twenty twenty six. We will no longer be able to issue retroactive Medicaid for a three month period. Right now, if somebody came in the door today, we would look at coverage for this month and three months back to cover any bills. So somebody who had a catastrophic accident and came in today to say, I have hospital bills from the past three months. I've been in rehabilitation care. We would be able to go back and pay that. This will be limited to one month of retroactive care. So we anticipate there will be some uncompensated care costs to our community, to the hospitals, nursing facilities in the community. Those are major changes related to Medicaid, and I want to pause. That's a lot of information, some of it weedy to see if there are questions around Medicaid changes.
I just want to reiterate for the purpose of my understanding. You're seeing that the amount of just physical clicks and data entry that is needs to be done by our staff has doubled. With these requirements at the same time as the funding for those positions has gone down.
That is correct.
What do you think we can do, if anything? To respond to that dynamic? Or what can we do to the best of our ability to prevent a higher error rate for our workers? Seeing their workload double?
So. This is Katie McDougall for those of you who are listening and streaming now.
Yes. That's a great question, and we're going to have to dig into that with our team in terms of how do we make sure that our processes are most efficient? How are we communicating with our community about what is needed in order to be eligible, to remain eligible? What are the timeframes? Working closely with our state partners on improved technology? And how can we find best efficiencies when we know that we already have really cumbersome statewide systems that don't always? Work to our advantage. Really, we'll rely on you all. And it's in a future slide about how do we work together to influence and impact that? The state legislature around the needs of our counties as we're administering these programs for the people who need it. I do think that we'll have, and I appreciate the influence that you all have down at the Capitol. And I do think that we're going to need to come together as counties to really think through what are the best solutions there. For some of these changes, they are sooner than, you know, maybe some of the others. And so we're going to really make sure that we're focusing in on those that are going to impact community. More more quickly to make sure that we have as as clean a process as we can. I do want to really give credit to this team for a quick minute because they are doing tremendous work. There was a time in our community where people were having to wait a very long time. So I will say inserting into a situation when we know that we're going to have to do more with less. We are stable right now and performing extremely well. And that wasn't always something that I could report out to you all. And so that will play a large factor, I think, in making sure that we're able to respond as best as we can. We will continue to learn from other states, other counties. I don't think anybody has the special sauce or the right recipe for this because it's also new. And it's not something that we've experienced before. And so we're going to have to get creative, innovative, and we're going to have to be pretty adaptable and resilient over the next several months as we implement.
Okay, thank you.
I wish I had a better answer.
No, I I sort of expected that. That's where it was like, I just want to restate back, but I thought I heard to make sure I understood.
Absolutely.
Very quickly, so from my for the dates under these changes. Most of these, when you say twenty twenty six, we're talking end of, we're talking and December thirty first is the date, the calendar date.
That is correct.
Thank you. And twenty seven, same for twenty seven. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we will move to snap.
Okay, I also get to talk to you about SNAP, which is our food assistance program. So again, in twenty twenty four, those same two hundred and seventeen employees process benefits for about ninety eight thousand Adams County residents receiving food assistance. Again, many of these changes are impacting both our community and our operations. So I will talk through again, some that are up here and some additional ones that passed in the final bill that we learned about. So effective, and I'm going to throw out some dates here, so slow down or please ask me to repeat as as things come up for you. So the federal fiscal year starts October first, and that's when you're going to see most of these SNAP changes. Across different years. And in the SNAP section of the bill, we have much clearer guidance around when most things happen. So October first of this year, SNAP Ed is eliminated. So that is a program that provides nutrition assistance to folks who are SNAP eligible. Effective October first of twenty twenty six, so next year. The SNAP administrative cost share reduces federally. We get seventy five percent right now. That will be reduced to fifty percent federal cost sharing for administrative costs. We do not know yet whether those costs will be passed along to counties. If it was done equally, that's about a two point eight million dollar impact to our county. Again, though, we don't know if that will happen. Those are our initial projections of how it could impact us. Effective October first, twenty twenty seven, so a year later. There is a SNAP benefit cost share for states. So this cost share is based on payment error rates. In either twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six, we get to choose. Our state's error rate is just under ten percent and Adams County generally trends below that. But that means our our cost share is about ten percent of our benefit share. This is a pretty significant number statewide and in the county. If passed along specifically to the county, it's over fifteen million dollars. So we do not know again how that will play out. We don't know what the state decisions will be around that. But that is something that is it is headed our way. So the next things have impacts to both operations and our community. And there are no dates listed in the bill, so some have interpreted that as being effective right now. Some have said we need to wait for federal rules. The first is an expanded SNAP work requirement. So like Medicaid, the work requirement will now extend to age sixty four. In the previous rule, it was up to age fifty four that you were required to work in order to maintain your SNAP benefits. It also changes the age of a dependent child. Down to fourteen from eighteen. So we have additional folks who are work required in order to keep that benefit.
Well, hold on.
Yes.
So fifteen year olds have to work to keep their SNAP requirement?
That no fifteen year olds are no longer considered a dependent to exempt the parent or other caregiver from the work requirement. Yep, that's okay. Thank you for the clarifying clarifying question. It does eliminate some of the exemptions that we actually see added added on the Medicaid side. So we have exemptions right now for those who are unhoused, former foster youth and for veterans. Those exemptions are eliminated. So we see a lot more people who need to engage in a work requirement. In order to maintain SNAP benefits beyond the three months that folks can get them without meeting. Another change that is happening, which could be effective now, depending on how you interpret the bill, because there was no date listed. Is that it limits the amount that we can apply for a utility deduction. Including eliminating internet expenses for most people as a deduction. What that means is that people will get fewer benefits, like their allotment amount per month may decrease because we're not allowed to count as many things for them. This again, upon enactment, potentially limits SNAP eligibility to US citizens or lawful permanent residents. Removing some longstanding humanitarian statuses apart from Cuban and Haitian nationals. And again, the the requirement to abandon residency is listed here. Living eligibility.
Any questions from the board before we move on to office now?
Guess my question is broader because, you know, there's a lot of names and numbers throwing out here. Do we have? So some of this stuff may or may not be. Sounds like it could be implemented today. Is that something that we are implementing because there is no date associated to some of these things? Is that the work that we're undergoing right now?
So thank you, Commissioner. Right now we're planning to implement. And it's really good to have this indication from the bill and from again, our connections at the federal level and the state level. But I wouldn't suggest that Adams County should implement anything until we have the federal regulations and the state regulations that direct us. What we can do is prepare the community for what we anticipate. But I I don't believe that we should start to implement anything until we have further direction.
Okay, that's a great clarification. And then we've already, you've already mentioned some things that we could kind of already assume are going to be impacts either on people being. Losing their benefits. Reduction of benefits. As those continue to move forward, how is that information going to be shared with the board?
We can come back. Oh, go ahead, Dan. Do you want to?
Well, we've talked about establishing more regular updates like this as we're working through this. And we chatted this morning about some of the collaborative work that we're starting to do and even possibly a dashboard that public health is working on. But I think over the next year, we're going to be having, I don't know, monthly, what the right cadence is. As we get more clarity, if the state has, you know, a special session as we get into next budget year with the state and get a lot more clarity on what our actual impact will be. We'll have more detail. And I think we should just plan for it. I think that's going to be right now. That's sort of what we're planning about your change management efforts.
Yeah, and towards the end of the the presentation, I'll talk a little bit about again, change management, our hope for providing you regular updates, things of that nature.
And I do have a question, not a question, but just in the sixteen thousand five hundred residents, do we have that broken down by the various impacted groups? Like, I'm curious how many people are right now between age of fifty four and sixty four who are going to now have work requirements if they didn't like of that? You know, what those breakdowns are.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look. The legislation as passed does have some exemptions, right? That maybe are different from how that looked before. I feel a little hesitant to give like an exact number that will be impacted until we get the federal and state rules. Because there are additional waivers that states can apply for those sorts of things. And we don't know necessarily where the state of Colorado policy will go. So as that develops, I think we can get closer and closer to an accurate number. Of folks that are impacted, broken down by age or category type. But I do think we're we're sort of waiting to be reactive to what that rule looks like.
Julie, sorry, another question. So now I have another question followed by. What is the timeline for the federal rules to be? How how long do we have to wait to get the federal rules? And then if we don't have a special session. This summer, when will we get the state rules? Does it? Is it dependent on a special session?
I think that some decisions will be dependent upon the state's budget. And so if they don't do a special session, you're looking at obviously our next legislative session in Colorado. We're actually very, I think, fortunate that we do that yearly. Other states don't do that yearly. So I do think that we're in a position where some of that can be helpful. We have not heard from our state departments, several of them, when they anticipate to have regulations ready for us. They are still also in a very much so planning. Stage and with all of the federal connections, we haven't heard of a date certain from them either. I think that everybody is still reacting to what we're learning through through the bill.
Okay, so we're going to be in a period of just kind of wait and see again for potentially quite a while. Where we don't understand what the impacts are fully going to be. Because we're waiting on the feds to decide, and then we're also going to be waiting on our state legislature to decide, right?
And I heard John try to chommy and try and.
Commissioner, you're you're absolutely correct. I would say in the back of your head, put sixty to ninety days. Would be the goal from and okay, goal. From this administration to get out initial guidance. And then I think the states start working with that initial guidance and then it flows down to you all. So at least that's that's how we're understanding it at at the moment. That they will, there is a lot of implementation rulemaking that needs to be made and guidances that need to be offered. And that's going to take between sixty and ninety days.
The other thing I might add to that is because the timeline is extended on some of these changes. There might not be as much urgency to finalize some of those federal rules. Aside from those things that don't have dates. So sometimes we might see multiple rulemaking processes that we have to react to. At the state or federal level.
Well, understanding that timeline is really important because it also helps us communicate to our community.
Yeah.
What like the fact that we are not able to come back and say, hey, this many residents are impacted or this is the dollar amount like. We're not going to be able to come back with those uncertainty uncertainties anytime soon. It sounds like. And so that's going to be a really good communication point as well. Of this is why we don't know and we're still waiting and everyone's still just going to be on pins and needles. But that's an important message to give to our stakeholders as well.
Okay. Next is speaking of our workforce program. So within the workforce and business center, mainly on we owe us. So again, just want to note, this is not related to HR one. This is HR six, six, five, five. We have about seventy five team members in the workforce and business center. And last year, we served about eleven thousand residents. We are anticipating with this a thirty five percent funding reduction to workforce innovation act funding. And that they want to consolidate many of those programs into a single block grant, which would give states quite a bit of flexibility. So we do know that we'll have to shift to a single state administered block grant. That could reduce some of our local control. And certainly we believe there could be some staffing implications with that large of a cut. And also know that there would be reductions in services, training and that job seeking support that we provide to residents. As we're looking to support them in upskilling or reskilling for livable wage jobs in our community. I'll pause there and see have less information on this at this point, but we will keep digging in more and can return with more.
Go ahead, John. If I could, I'd throw in now that the let's let's talk about the polit- the politics of this. This bill passed in twenty, a bill like this passed in twenty twenty four. And went nowhere in the United States Senate, as you would expect with the Republican House and Republican Senate. The president's budget is, we're now calling it trim, not skinny. Budget that did get a little bit bigger does take about thirty nine thirty four point nine percent cut to the Department of Labor. And about a fifteen percent cut to the Department of Education. Again, these are, these are budgetary impacts that are separate and apart from budget reconciliation. Though there is nothing that says they could not do another budget reconciliation bill and put this stuff in there. But at the moment, that doesn't exist. We would see these cuts in in around the appropriations process. And recall with the approach, the most important thing to remember with appropriations process is it takes sixty votes. And there are only fifty three of the majority party at the moment. So you got to get seven Democrats. So this, this is certainly in the direction of where this administration wants to go. These numbers you see, these cuts at the Department of Labor that you see. We will most likely see some effort in a rescissions package to do some of this as well. This is going to be a an ongoing fight, I think, not just from a reauthorization standpoint, but from an appropriation. but from an appropri- from an appropriations and a rescissions standpoint as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, John. Okay, moving on to TANF. Again, uh, just here, uh, as something for us to keep an eye on, it is not included in HR one. Uh, again, it is something that comes up yearly around reauthorization, and so we'll keep uh, an eye on uh, this, the only rumors in and around TANF is a ten percent cut. Uh, but again, that is rumored, so we wouldn't, uh, we haven't done any projections on this. Uh, but did wanna note, last year, we served eighty-seven hundred uh, residents through the TANF program. For LEAP, uh, we have one team member and we serve approximately sixteen thousand residents in twenty twenty-four. Uh, we don't see any changes to LEAP as uh, was originally rumored, so that uh, program will continue uh, operating next year. Head Start, we have approximately seventy-eight team members and serve two hundred and fifty-six children. Uh, none of, uh, no changes that were rumored, rumored were included in HR one, and so we'll continue with Head Start operations uh, next school year. Uh, SSBG, again, the child welfare funding, we have a, a three hundred and twenty-six team members uh, across that entire division. Um, I did not put the number of uh, individuals we serve because that's uh, not an easy number to get to based upon, Heidi shaking her head. Based upon, are we talking about intake calls or are we talking about open cases? And so, uh, we do know that it's uh, important to our community. Uh, and as uh, John has said, PEGO is not likely to be triggered, uh, but we are uh, certainly uh, keeping an eye on everything just because of how important child welfare and adult protective services is to our community. Just to start to wrap up our department impacts, uh, we do believe that uh, there will be staffing implications. Uh, we do think that we have an opportunity here to address this through uh, the soft hiring freeze that we're currently under as well as um, uh, really a, a tr- attrition, and as we see vacancies uh, become available. Uh, we, at this point, a- again, until we know more, uh, don't anticipate that we'll need to address that other ways. Uh, we do know, as you've pointed out, so thank you for uh, understanding this, there are large workload and administrative complexities that are added with these changes. Um, they're shifting eligibility standards and that's gonna cause confusion uh, for our residents, for our team members as well as loss of benefits, and we're gonna do everything we can to try to make sure uh, we can be uh, to mitigate that as much as we, as we can. Um, we know that there will be higher staffing needs and technology needs with limited resources. Uh, and certainly know that this team is uh, agile and resilient, and we continue to, to do good work, and that's, that's our hope going forward. And then there's just a lot of timeline uncertainties, uh, and certainly appreciate John chiming in. Yes, hopefully sixty, ninety days, so we start to learn more, uh, but I do think that this is uh, because of the different timing of all of the different uh, start dates. Uh, we're in this for a couple of years. This is, this is a journey to final implementation across the entire bill uh, that we're gonna, that we're gonna be spending a lot of time on. Uh, we do see some opportunities uh, to reimagine our services and our supports, uh, to really accelerate technology solutions in our service delivery model, uh, flexibility at the state level for program design. Uh, and really using those relationships that we have at the state level to be able to inform and impact decisions uh, at the state level. And space for innovation, especially in our workforce programs, uh, if it does get block granted. Uh, and that's to continue. Uh, the risks and challenges, obviously, are budget pressures, uh, state cost obligations and county cost obligations alongside those decreased federal funding. Uh, sudden eligibility shifts for residents are, is never an easy uh, change to work through. Uh, we know that there's that increased administrative burden, more reports, more eligibility requirement, extra eligibility redeterminations. Um, we uh, believe that there's gonna be increased uninsured uh, and higher uncompensated care. Uh, we know that there's gonna be rising food and house insecurity and greater demand on safety net programs. And I will note here, uh, as all resources, research has told us, when food and housing becomes a problem, we see a large influx to our hotline calls related to child uh, welfare and uh, how they're doing in the community. Uh, we know staffing and technology needs are going to outpace the budget. Uh, and, and we know that there will be disruptions to our community partners who we value so very much uh, for the work that they do in our community. And there are equity concerns uh, about this bill, and we touched on those certainly as we were presenting to you. So uh, the equity impacts really is the risk of increasing services across disparities overall. Uh, to low-income families, to immigrants, to people with disabilities, uh, to aging adults, to rural communities, to communities of color, communities with limited English proficiency, and uh, certainly, and community engagement and impact monitoring will be essential as we look at how do we best meet the needs of those who are being underserved. So what we know, what's confirmed, uh, which what, what we talked about is, you know, HR one has passed. Looking at the outdated part of this, we know it's been signed. Uh, we certainly know that LEAP uh, is gonna be here, we're gonna keep an eye on PEGO. Glad it's not gonna be anything we need to worry about, so thank you for that, John. Uh, and certainly the, the cost sharing that we spoke about in our presentation to you. Here's a timeline, uh, again, of what we're, we're really uh, working, working closely on. Uh, we talked about those timelines throughout our presentation, so I'm not gonna repeat this for you all. Uh, but certainly know that they, again, there are different touchpoints and different times that uh, are gonna impact our service delivery and our community. Uh, going forward, uh, we know it's going to be imperative, uh, that we are working with the state uh, through our legislative outreach and education. Really, uh, pleased that we're gonna have uh, our uh, time with our legislature uh, in the coming months where we can educate on uh, what the error rate is in SNAP. What is that? It's complex, uh, who in our community is uh, impacted by these type of changes, uh, and hopefully try to help influence uh, the decisions that will be made down uh, at the Capitol, because they're gonna be hard decisions. Um, certainly wanting to preserve our local funding flexibility, we're working on those implementation timelines, so really working with our state that we know we can't just flip a switch, it's not an easy thing to do, so what are the runways that we need to prepare teams and prepare our community? And hopefully, looking at what are some protections against the loss uh, that our community is going to uh, have to absorb. Planning and strategic steps, uh, we are doing a lot. Uh, and so I'm gonna just give you a quick overview, but certainly can peel this back for you in, in another session. But we're gonna continue to monitor, uh, continue to evaluate the impact. Uh, we have change management experts uh, within the department uh, and within the county, and so we are gonna rely on those experts, and we have some workgroups that are already in motion and working through these changes. Uh, we are working on budget realignment and contingency planning. Uh, so certainly we'll probably have more budget discussions um, off our budget cycle. Uh, noting that uh, we're gonna have to adjust uh, to these different timelines. Uh, we are also looking at those different budget scenarios. Uh, we're working on a communication plan. This is not just internal, it's external. Uh, examples of this, we don't want people to stop sending in their SNAP paperwork right now. Uh, you know, they still are eligible and we want them enrolled, and we want them to receive that benefit as long as they can. So we don't want there to be confusion, so making sure that we're getting to our community, that they know that, that we're here, that uh, we're able to help them uh, keep that eligibility until the time we need to start making changes, and then we'll make sure that we're shifting that communication uh, with them. Uh, we are being transparent with the human services team, so uh, they receive uh, regular communication from me. Uh, we host special sessions so that they can ask questions. Uh, they are receiving very similar information as to what you just received, not as detailed, because you're, it's hot off the press uh, coming to you. Uh, but certainly, uh, it's good for them to know and be able to plan for the changes that we have ahead of us. We know that we're gonna need to communicate uh, and co- collaborate with our community. Uh, and so we have plans to do community sessions um, and forums so that we can talk with our community partners, our community-based organizations about the impacts that we anticipate to see to our community so that we can support them, and they can be uh, prepared to support the community in the ways that they can, if they can, because I know this is going to impact them as well. Um, as well as community education, knowing that uh, this does impact um, our school districts. It does impact uh, all of our local law enforcement jurisdictions as well, as they're seeing people in our community uh, go without maybe uh, food assistance or medical assistance, and how do we uh, come together to collaborate? Uh, and again, provide the education about the, the changes that are ahead of us. So, high-level overview of the transition planning that's happening, uh, just in bullet points. Uh, each one of those has about twenty steps underneath each one, uh, but uh, this is high uh, high impa- like, powerful change management of the, at the core of what we're, we're looking at here. So I will pause there and say, are there any other questions, comments, or support we can provide you?
Um, I appreciate how much you're leaning into this. Uh, the one thing I did not see on your list was communication with our union. And I'm just curious, how's that going and how are you planning for that?
Uh, so we have not, because there's not been staffing implications yet, uh, had the uh, conversations with them. But we do meet with them regularly, so I meet with them um, every couple of months where we're talking about the changes that are happening at the federal level. Uh, once we do, or if we do see staffing implications, we'll make sure that we are working with them immediately. Um, and so, yes, it does part of the plan to continue to work with them as we do normally.
When is the next scheduled meeting?
Oh, I don't know. I'd have to look, I can get that back to you. Yeah, it's our labor management committee, Heidi. So, uh, the union does bring uh, their agenda items to that meeting, uh, we bring our agenda items, this will be a, a standing agenda item over the next several several months.
If you have, if you have a workforce that's represented, and they're being asked to do twice the amount of work with the same or smaller staff, that you, you say that you don't have any staffing decisions, but I read that as a staffing decision, and I don't know how you're managing those workflows without I, I, I just don't know what you guys are gonna be doing to manage those workflows, because it feels like it is both uh, purposefully crunching to make it very difficult to apply and purposefully crunching to make the error rate higher. Anytime you're doing twice as much work in the same amount of time, standard logic means that your error rate's gonna go up.
No, thank you for clarifying. I was thinking of staffing in terms of um, would we see a reduction in force? So my mindset was there, not necessarily on workload. Um, I am really pleased with the new processes that our uh, leadership team has in place, which is to, one at all possible, make sure that we're designing and co-designing with our team. Um, because we don't wanna necessarily make the decisions for them, we wanna make it with them. Uh, and many of them have given a lot of great compliments to us around uh, being involved in the decisions, helping us understand what maybe uh, we don't see day-to-day as they're interacting with the residents, what ideas they have. Um, credit again to this unit who's going to be impacted the most, they've completely changed the service delivery model here in Adams County. And the majority of that came from our team who d- does the work and implemented it. And uh, gave us, you know, gave the ideas for what the processes should be. And so we would continue in that, and I do, you know, certainly we'll have the state decisions, once we get the state's decisions that will trigger uh, that opportunity for us to work with the team, so again, it's that I, I, it sounds like we're wait, waiting and see, part of that's true. We have to see what, what criteria do we have to work within. Um, and will certainly trigger those workgroups and those, the ability to, to help redesign where we go. Thank you, August fourteenth. All right.
I just wanna say thank you for the presentation. I know this represents a, a very significant amount of work on part of many people to uh, understand, uh, or you've been tracking this for a long time, to understand what is coming, coming our way, and now that has been solidified. Well, that, well, that's not even a good word to say, because as you've said, there are still uncertainties. So, but um, it's, it's a big bill, and uh, so thank you for all this data and for being on top of it, and, and for your calm delivery of some very uh, perplexing information. I'll just leave it at that for, for now, and um, thanks for the timeline of, you know, what, what when you might, when you might know more, and that, that we'll know when we can, we'll be looking forward to hearing from you again. And of course, the community uh, education and uh, outreach is definitely something we, as commissioners, of course, want to help, I'll speak for myself, definitely wanna be part of in any way we can to get that message out. Um, to try to make this new, these new processes um, well-known and to go smoothly as possible, if there's anything we can do to help with that.
We appreciate that, gonna take a team for sure.
Go ahead, Steve.
Um, yeah, I think as we, as we go into these discussions, I would be trying to figure out if we have to make not, ideally, we're not having to make personnel cuts, I get that, like, that's um, but we got service cuts, we've got personnel. Um, I know you guys already started in the last discussion of what are the things that are absolutely required versus not required. Um, over the years, you, we've gotten a lot of FTEs, new stuff, and so the question is, is how many of those have stayed in their same positions? And how many are you gonna shuffle around based on priority? Um, I'd like to pro- provide more transparency in all of the departments, so just so you know, I'm not picking on you, I'm asking this consistently with all departments that we start figuring out this, how directors have the ability to ask for one thing and then shuffle around sometimes immediately. Uh, and I wanna be able to understand that more, because uh, we have gotten a lot of investment i- in your team recently. I'm trying to figure out how much we have for vacancies and all that. Because I, I know each director's always gonna ask for as much as they can to kind of hold dibs on even spots where they have vacancies. And I know that you know that we're in kind of a little bit more of a scarcity mode than we have been in the past, so I'm gonna consistently ask these questions for all departments.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Oderusio, and uh, and actually is a good primer. Um, Dion and I spoke, and, and we're hoping to come back uh, before you in a, a few weeks to discuss human services budget, just uh, globally, like, how does it work? Um, what is uh, the inner workings of it, uh, because it, the revenues do work a, a bit different than the over, like, under the umbrella of the, the larger human uh, county budget. And so, uh, we will certainly uh, provide information about that. Uh, and would say, uh, it, it will be a good time to update you all on some of the positions that you had approved uh, with uh, what was ARPA funding, or what was public health emergency funding, uh, which have uh, wh- which are no longer uh, employed uh, within uh, the human services department or within the county based upon the loss of those funding sources, so uh, looking forward to that conversation to provide more up, uh, of an update, and also some education on all of the different funding streams within human services.
Dion?
Yeah, and I wanted, I guess, frame a little bit of big picture, kind of what we're looking at, because I think human services has definitely been the epicenter of a lot of this sort of change effort, but we know that there's other service lines that are impacted. And we've been talking a lot about how we distinguish between our immediate sort of operational impacts, which right now are not huge, but they're, they're there's a lot coming, and community impacts, and how we kind of are working together on managing sort of the, the inflow of folks through educating on, like, to, to Katie's point, who's eligible, are you eligible for, how do you navigate the eligibility process? Where are there opportunities for us to maybe leverage some of our partnerships and community stakeholders to help people understand that process? But also be creative in meeting eligibility requirements, and if our partners are able to help us think through that, you know, that's that's sort of the input side, and the, the technology, process improvement, service delivery, all those things that we have control over. And then also thinking about how we're advocating at the state level to really kind of tell the story of what we need as a county, and what all the counties are gonna need when it comes to like, the administrative burden that we all are gonna be facing and how we're doing that. But I also think that we need help with it. I mean, I do think that this is, you know, a, a big issue, and I know that the team has been working around the clock trying to figure out solutions, and probably feels a lot of pressure to tell everyone what are they gonna do and how they're gonna fix it. And we know that we really wanna bring everything to bear as far as thinking through what's within our wheelhouse, and like, in our budget process, we're looking at what can the county actually strategically do to, if not fully backfill some of this, create more of an off-ramp? Or create maybe a different channel for providing some of the supports that we think are most critical with the, the funds that we do have? What does that look like in, in our budget, and what is available to us, and trying to kind of think through what that's gonna mean for us? And so if we get further into the budget process, that's the type of discussion that we're gonna be having more of. Um, but acknowledging, we can't just, you know, backfill everything, but there are some opportunities, I think, to really look at what we're investing in now and what the outcomes we wanna get to, what that's gonna be, but I think we definitely know we need a, a good brain trust here to, to try and figure out, and it's not gonna be overnight, I mean, this is, this is definitely a process. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I, thank you, I, you know, I just wanna comment on what Kathy had said, is that um, really a fall off the cliff moment, um, like third, letting, leading up to this. Um, thank you for your delivery. I know John's still on the, on call with us, and I wanna thank them and, and their work.
Yes.
I, I just wanna let you know, you know, and um, the staff know that this that this board is committed to helping as many people as we can for as long as we can. That is not just clients, that is our staff as well. Um, it's been emotional. We all ran into each other at the Stars and Stripes event on the third.
Um, everyone but Steve.
Everyone but Steve, but.
He was there in spirit.
There in spirit, um. Yeah. Um, and what these changes look like for community, and I agree with Kathy, is that in Deion, in her, as she takes on her role and we communicate with Deion, is that this board's really committed of working shoulder to shoulder with staff and not sending you off to go talk to community with the bad news, is that we, we want to be there, we want to be present. Um, whether it's support, whether it's to carry a message, whether it's to handhold, um, we wanna do that. And I think yesterday, we all were present at, I talked about it in public hearing, um, Community Table is a new nonprofit, newer to us. Um, has been established for a long time in Arvada, uh, a food pantry. And I think what we're gonna see through this, and while it makes my heart sing, it also makes me really sad that we're in this situation cause we know what the need is, is that we're gonna have nonprofits reach out to us. And it was suggested um, by the Jefferson County Commissioners, also joined in the Arvada mayor. Um, that maybe we start building these networks through Spark and through our own network of food pantries and hospitals and clinics. And what does care look like and how can we help get, you know, get the help in the hands of people that really need it as quickly as we can? And that is our school district, so I do appreciate you mentioning that. And so, we're thinking of you, um, I was just talking, I think, to my brother. It was my brother earlier this morning, is that I went to a family event and everyone wants to talk about politics and, you know, the big bill. And I was like, you know, I, I do this work, um, and I love doing this work. It is not my whole life when I'm with my extended family, like, um, it is a part of my life. It is a part, it doesn't define me as a person. I do this out because, I do this because I love the work and I love this community. And there are times when I wanna talk about it, that unfortunately was not one of the times I wanted to talk about it and really just wanted to be the family. But here we are and we're all a big family here in Adams as well and we're here to support you and your staff.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yep.
Thank you.